Good evening, I would like to call our City Council Meeting for August 22nd, 2018 to order. At this time, for a moment of silence, let's think about all of our children who start school tomorrow. The opportunities they have, that we now more than ever need to all come together, provide support for all of those young people. It really does take all of us together to provide the support that they need, and I know with the people in this room, we can provide that support. So with that, a moment of silence, please. Thank you very much. If we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, and Alderman Condon will lead us.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Alderman Condon. Jackie, would you please call the roll?
Dickman.
Here.
Mattson.
Here.
Gripp.
Here.
McGinnis.
Here.
Clul.
Here.
Tompkins.
Here.
Dunn.
Here.
Nine present, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. And again, I want to wish you a good evening, and as we begin this meeting of the City Council, I would again like to welcome all those in attendance, and those who are viewing the meeting on television or on the Internet. You know, as we begin this meeting, realizing that this city and this City Council, other representatives who came over the years started in 1836. This is 182 years of this type of work, listening to our citizens, and trying to provide you the best leadership that we can. You know, I think it's important, we want to be a model of that respect, and the opportunities that we all have. We listen respectfully, you give your ideas, and that's important, that's what democracy is all about. And we respectfully welcome your comments and opinions, and please keep in mind that as you talk to the council, you're also sharing your thoughts with fellow Davenporters and with viewers throughout the region by way of our TV broadcast. We are happy that you're participating in your city government, and ask that your participation reflect the common desire we all share, to make Davenport an even greater place for all of our citizens. For the children, adults, seniors, and families in our community, those in attendance and those watching at home, I thank you for joining us. At this time, we ask that you turn off or silence your cellphones and other electronic handheld devices, as they can interfere with the audio system and be disruptive here in the chambers. When you, you will have an opportunity to discuss items on our discussion agenda, and if you, when you do so, please do it during that time, you'll have opportunities throughout this early part of the meeting. You will also have an opportunity to address the City Council under public with business portion of the meeting, which will occur towards the end. When addressing the council, I ask that you step to the podium, wait to be recognized by myself this evening, and speak to the council as a body, and not to any single member. You are asked to limit your remarks to no more than five minutes, and I ask that everyone will observe, and I know you all will, the commonly accepted rules of courtesy, decorum, dignity, and good taste, that we have shared in this community for 182 years. So thank you all for being here this evening. With that, will then Alderman move approval of the minutes of the City Council Meeting for August 8th, 2018, and the special counsel joint committee of the whole meeting with the City of Bettendorf for August 13th? There's a motion and a second, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, same sign. Thank you very much. Just as a clarification, some of you may know, we had a discussion, a committee of the whole meeting, a separate, an additional one that was open to the public, was held at the Waterfront Convention Center relating to fiber optic support that we're going to be talking about this evening, so I just wanted to let you know what that special committee of the whole meeting was. Is there a city administrator update this evening?
Just a couple of quick items, just a reminder that this month has five Wednesdays in it, and so as a result, next week, there won't be any City Council Meetings. We'll be back with Committee of the Whole Meeting on Wednesday, September 5th. Then just one more reminder, that on Labor Day, September 3rd, city offices will be closed.
Thank you very much. With that, will then Alderman move approval of the report of the Committee of the Whole for August 15th, 2018? It's been moved and seconded, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, same sign. Thank you, that has been approved. We have a couple of, we have one proclamation this evening, on water and wastewater workers of Iowa Week, and Alderman Dunn is going to read that proclamation.
Thank you, Your Honor, proclamation reads, "Whereas the surface and groundwater of the city of Davenport, our region and nation, are our city and country's greatest natural asset, and whereas the water treatment, stormwater and wastewater workforce, is dedicated to maintaining the natural and built infrastructure that conveys and cleans our water resources for use and reuse, and whereas the engineering and environmental science-based practices in water, stormwater, and wastewater processing, continue to be a vital element in protecting public health and enhancing our water resources, and whereas the service provided by these professionals are an integral part of our citizens' everyday
it's something we all use every day, and we appreciate you recognizing them for what
lives. Now, therefore, we, Frank Klipsch, Mayor and City of Davenport Council, do hereby proclaim
they do. Thanks.
Thank you, Nicole, to Amy Kaye and all your team for all the great work that they
the Week of August 19th through August 25th, 2018, as Water and Wastewater Workers of Iowa Week. We call upon all citizens to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in water treatment,
do. Robin Dunn's another one in that work, so I want to thank all of you for that exemplary
stormwater pollution prevention and runoff reduction, and wastewater treatment, and
work, and the work that you will continue to do. We have two presentations this evening.
recognize the contributions of water professionals make every day to promote sustainability,
One, I am excited to be able to present, as both of these are, our Miss Iowa, who's
protect public health, and our water resources, dated this 22nd day of August 2018.
here this evening, and I'm going to come down and I'll, we'll get some pictures, it's
I move the proclamation."
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor say aye. always fun getting pictures with Miss Iowa. Thank you very much, and Nicole Gleason, our Director of Public Works, will come up But from our community, is Eric your brother? and accept the proclamation. Eric?
Stepfather.
Okay. Well, Eric Rogers grew up with my son, and, and it's Deborah Rogers who works here in our, as one of our receptionists. It's excited to have you here this evening as well. Mahala's platform issue was the Hope Program for Suicide Awareness. She's a violinist, that's her performance area. She's graduated from the University of Iowa and received a Bachelor's Arts in Journalism and Mass Communications. I think she wants to go into the media field, and, and I think that may be something she can do, we want to obviously wish her a lot of luck in that. She's received a lot of scholarships, and scholarship recognitions, and academic recognition, so we thank you for representing our community so well. And there's so many other things that you've done, but we just wanted to say thank you, congratulations, and I'm going to come up and present you with a little something, but then, more importantly, maybe you can say just words of what's out before you yet, so... Special commemorative coin, it challenges people to not only, and thank you for what you've done, but challenge you to do greater even things in the future. So with that, I'm going to pass you that, and we'll hand you that, and we'll get a picture, everybody wants to see you smiling.
They want to see you smiling too, not just me.
Yeah, well, thank you. You want to say a few words?
Yes. Well, thank you so much, this, this really does mean a lot to me, I truly appreciate it. And, so what's next for me? I am actually leaving on Tuesday to compete for Miss America, which is terrifying and crazy to say. The finals will be on September 9th on ABC, so the hope is that, if I make it to finals, you could all see me on TV. And if not, you'll at least see me say, "Hey, Mahala, Iowa," we'll go from there. But yes, I graduated from Rock Island High School in 2015, and since I attend the University of Iowa, that's how I was able to compete for Miss Iowa, but I love the Quad Cities, I'm a proud Quad citizen, as I like to say, and I'm just really excited to not only represent this amazing community, but Iowa at Miss America, it'll be great. So, thank you.
Congratulations. You know, these are some, obviously some great things with Mahala, Mahala, and, but now we get to swear in eight new officers, and I'm going to ask Chief Sikorski to come up, and I'm going to meet you out in front as we swear in the officers and welcome them in their new roles.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Paul Sikorski, your police chief, and just a, just a little opening remarks here. This evening, I'm honored to, as the police chief, to be able to stand in front of you and introduce to you eight of our brand-new police officers here. It's even more important for us as a police department to have so many members of the community here as also, to witness this, really a monumental day in their, in their career here for the city of Davenport. These officers, six of them just finished 14 weeks at the Police Academy. All of them did very well there. Two of them, we bring here to Davenport from previous law enforcement careers, and I'll explain that to you as we, as we move forward. Today is a, is really a night for these eight officers and their families who are here. It's, it's a beginning of an incredible opportunity for them, an opportunity for them to have a positive effect on our community every single day that they're at work. And with that opportunity comes great responsibility as well. For the next four and a half months or so, they will be involved with a Field Training Officer Program here in our city, with experienced officers, learning how to police here in Davenport. They have the basics from the academy, now they're going to learn how to, how to police here in Davenport. So I would like to introduce them to you, one at a time, for the official swearing-in ceremony. The first police officer is Police Officer Joshua Wade. Josh grew up in Clinton, Iowa, and graduated from Clinton High School in 2011. In 2015, Josh graduated from Ashford University. He completed his Bachelor of Arts degree with majors in history and social and criminal justice, with a specialization in forensics. He served as a corrections officer with the Clinton County Sheriff's Office for three years before accepting a career opportunity with the Davenport Police Department. In his spare time, Josh enjoys hunting and spending time with his friends and family. His father Joel will be pinning his badge.
Swearing in, and then repeat after me, just going to go this way, and I won't read the entire paragraph at once, but we'll read the whole part. I state your name, I'll raise your right hand. I state your name.
Aye, Joshua Wade.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties of a police officer.
Discharge all the duties of a police officer.
Of the city of Davenport.
Of the city of Davenport.
County of Scott.
County of Scott.
State of Iowa.
State of Iowa.
As now or hereafter required by law.
As now or hereafter required by law.
Congratulations. Police Officer Anjan Nguyen. Anjan was born and raised in Davenport, Iowa. He graduated from Davenport West High School in 2012. Anjan received his Associate's Degree in Criminal Justice from Kaplan University. While in college, Anjan worked for Super Target as a loss prevention officer, and following that, he worked for Trinity Hospital in Muscatine, Iowa, as a security officer. Anjan also worked for American Honda prior to obtaining employment with the Davenport Police Department. Anjan is bilingual in English and Vietnamese. While attending the Iowa Law Enforcement Academy, Anjan received the 300-point club award for physical fitness. His sister Rosie will be pinning his badge. I state your name.
Aye, Anjan Nguyen.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties of a police officer.
Discharge all the duties of a police officer.
Of the city of Davenport.
Of the city of Davenport.
County of Scott.
County of Scott.
State of Iowa.
State of Iowa.
As now or hereafter required by law.
As now or hereafter required by law.
Correct. Congratulations. Police Officer Anjan Nguyen. Anjan was born and raised in Davenport, Iowa. He graduated from Davenport West High School in 2012. Anjan received his Associate's Degree in Criminal Justice from Kaplan University. While in college, Anjan worked for Supertarget as a loss prevention officer, and following that, he worked for Trinity Hospital in Muscatine, Iowa, as a security officer. Anjan also worked for American Honda prior to obtaining employment with the Davenport Police Department. Anjan is bilingual in English and Vietnamese. While attending the Iowa Law Enforcement Academy, Anjan received the 300-point club award for physical fitness. His sister Rosie will be pinning his badge. I state your name.
Aye, Anjan Nguyen.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties of a police officer.
Discharge all the duties of a police officer.
Of the city of Davenport.
Of the city of Davenport.
County of Scott.
County of Scott.
State of Iowa.
State of Iowa.
As now or hereafter required by law.
As now or hereafter required by law.
Congratulations. Police Officer Joshua Derner. Joshua was born in Virginia to a military family. Josh grew up in Germany, where he lived for 10 years. He graduated from Patch American High School in 2014. He received a Bachelor's Degree from Iowa State University with majors in criminal justice and sociology. In college, Josh worked as a Community Services Officer for the Iowa State University Department of Public Safety, prior to obtaining employment with the Davenport Police Department. While attending the Iowa Law Enforcement Academy, Josh received the Woodard Award for earning the highest academic average in the class, and the 300-point club award for physical fitness. His aunt Pam Peterson will be pinning his badge. I state your name.
Aye, Joshua Derner.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties of a police officer.
Discharge all the duties of a police officer.
Of the city of Davenport.
Of the city of Davenport.
County of Scott.
County of Scott.
State of Iowa.
State of Iowa.
As now or hereafter required by law.
As now or hereafter required by law.
Congratulations. Police Officer Kevin Remley. Kevin grew up in Buffalo, Iowa, and graduated from Durant Community High School in 2012. He attended Muscatine Community College for two years and receives his Associate's Degree. Kevin then transferred to St. Ambrose University, where he graduated in 2016 with a Bachelor of Arts Degree in Criminal Justice, and then received his Master's Degree in Criminal Justice in 2017. Since graduating from high school, Kevin has worked for the Scott County Conservation Board at Westlake Park as a park rager until being hired by the Davenport Police Department. His girlfriend, Stacia, will be pinning his badge. Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties of a police officer.
Discharge all the duties of a police officer.
For the city of Davenport.
For the city of Davenport.
County of Scott.
County of Scott.
State of Iowa.
State of Iowa.
As now or hereafter required by law.
As now or hereafter required by law.
Congratulations. Police Officer Anjan Nguyen. Anjan was born and raised in Davenport, Iowa. He graduated from Davenport West High School in 2012. Anjan received his Associate's Degree in Criminal Justice from Kaplan University. While in college, Anjan worked for Supertarget as a loss prevention officer, and following that, he worked for Trinity Hospital in Muscatine, Iowa, as a security officer. Anjan also worked for American Honda prior to obtaining employment with the Davenport Police Department. Anjan is bilingual in English and Vietnamese. While attending the Iowa Law Enforcement Academy, Anjan received the 300-point club award for physical fitness. His sister Rosie will be pinning his badge. I state your name.
Aye, Anjan Nguyen.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties of a police officer.
Discharge all the duties of a police officer.
Of the city of Davenport.
Of the city of Davenport.
County of Scott.
County of Scott.
State of Iowa.
State of Iowa.
As now or hereafter required by law.
As now or hereafter required by law.
Congratulations. Police Officer Anjan Nguyen. Anjan was born and raised in Davenport, Iowa. He graduated from Davenport West High School in 2012. Anjan received his Associate's Degree in Criminal Justice from Kaplan University. While in college, Anjan worked for Supertarget as a loss prevention officer, and following that, he worked for Trinity Hospital in Muscatine, Iowa, as a security officer. Anjan also worked for American Honda prior to obtaining employment with the Davenport Police Department. Anjan is bilingual in English and Vietnamese. While attending the Iowa Law Enforcement Academy, Anjan received the 300-point club award for physical fitness. His sister Rosie will be pinning his badge. I state your name.
Aye, Anjan Nguyen.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And that I will, I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties of a police officer.
Discharge all the duties of a police officer.
Of the city of Davenport.
Of the city of Davenport.
County of Scott.
County of Scott.
State of Iowa.
State of Iowa.
As now or hereafter required by law.
As now or hereafter required by law.
Correct. Congratulations. Police Officer Anjan Nguyen. Anjan was born and raised in Davenport, Iowa. He graduated from Davenport West High School in 2012. Anjan received his Associate's Degree in Criminal Justice from Kaplan University. While in college, Anjan worked for Supertarget as a loss prevention officer, and following that, he worked for Trinity Hospital in Muscatine, Iowa, as a security officer. Anjan also worked for American Honda prior to obtaining employment with the Davenport Police Department. Anjan is bilingual in English and Vietnamese. While attending the Iowa Law Enforcement Academy, Anjan received the 300-point club award for physical fitness. His sister Rosie will be pinning his badge. I state your name.
Aye, Anjan Nguyen.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties of a police officer.
Discharge all the duties of a police officer.
Of the city of Davenport.
Of the city of Davenport.
County of Scott.
County of Scott.
State of Iowa.
State of Iowa.
As now or hereafter required by law.
As now or hereafter required by law.
Congratulations. Police Officer Anjan Nguyen. Anjan was born and raised in Davenport, Iowa. He graduated from Davenport West High School in 2012. Anjan received his Associate's Degree in Criminal Justice from Kaplan University. While in college, Anjan worked for Supertarget as a loss prevention officer, and following that, he worked for Trinity Hospital in Muscatine, Iowa, as a security officer. Anjan also worked for American Honda prior to obtaining employment with the Davenport Police Department. Anjan is bilingual in English and Vietnamese. While attending the Iowa Law Enforcement Academy, Anjan received the 300-point club award for physical fitness. His sister Rosie will be pinning his badge. I state your name.
Aye, Anjan Nguyen.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties of a police officer.
Discharge all the duties of a police officer.
Of the city of Davenport.
Of the city of Davenport.
County of Scott.
County of Scott.
State of Iowa.
State of Iowa.
As now or hereafter required by law.
As now or hereafter required by law.
Congratulations. Police Officer Anja Mizzimer. Nate was born and raised in Burlington, New Jersey. He attended high school in Columbus, New Jersey, afterwards attending Burlington Community College, obtaining his Associate's Degree in Business Management in 2007. Nate then moved to Fairbanks, Alaska, and began his law enforcement career with the federal government as a Department of the Army civilian police officer. Nate then worked briefly for the North Pole Police Department, and I'm not making that up. I actually asked him during the interview, is that legit? Before moving to Davenport, Iowa in 2015, for the lovely sunshine. He was hired by the Tipton Police Department in Cedar County in 2016, where he obtained his Iowa Law Enforcement Academy certification through examination. Nate worked full-time for the Tipton Police Department, part-time for Wilton Police Department, and seasonally for the Scott County Conservation, until he was offered employment with the Davenport Police Department. Nate's spouse, Alyssa, will be pinning his badge.
I state your name.
Aye, Nathaniel Mizzimer.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties of a police officer.
Discharge all the duties of a police officer.
Of the city of Davenport.
Of the city of Davenport.
County of Scott.
County of Scott.
State of Iowa.
State of Iowa.
As now or hereafter required by law.
As now or hereafter required by law.
Congratulations. Police Officer Grant Killinger. Grant was raised in Port Byron, Illinois, and is a 2009 graduate, graduate of Riverdale High School. Following high school, Grant enrolled in the Criminal Justice Program at Sauk Valley College in Dixon, Illinois, where he also competed in college's cross-country athletic program. In 2011, Grant transferred to Western Illinois University, the Macomb Campus, where he completed his Bachelor's Degree in Law Enforcement and Justice Administration. After graduation, Grant was hired by the Illinois Department of Corrections and worked as a correctional officer in the East Moline Correctional Center. Grant was hired by the Rock Island County Sheriff's Office in 2015, where he worked as a deputy sheriff within the Patrol Division, until he was hired by the Davenport Police Department. Pinning his badge will be his girlfriend, Jessica. I state your name.
Aye, Grant Killinger.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties of a police officer.
Discharge all the duties of a police officer.
Of the city of Davenport.
Of the city of Davenport.
County of Scott.
County of Scott.
...a police officer.
Discharge all the duties of a police officer.
For the city of Davenport.
For the city of Davenport.
County of Scott.
County of Scott.
State of Iowa.
State of Iowa.
As now or hereafter required by law.
As now or hereafter required by law. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Police Officer Corey Hughes. Corey grew up in Scott County, Iowa, and graduated from North Scott High School in 2015. Following high school, Corey attended Scott Community College. In 2017, he received his associate's degree from Scott Community College with a major in criminal justice. Corey was active in athletics in high school. In his free time, he enjoys being active in physical fitness, golfing, and fishing. His mother Sheila will pin his badge.
Read your right hand. I state your name.
I, Corey Hughes.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the state of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all duties of a police officer.
Discharge all duties of a police officer.
Of the city of Davenport.
Of the city of Davenport.
County of Scott.
County of Scott.
State of Iowa.
State of Iowa.
As now or hereafter required by law.
As now or hereafter required by law.
Good job. Congratulations.
Police Officer Brittany Taylor. Brittany grew up in Bismarck, Illinois, where she graduated from Bismarck Henning High School in 2015. Following graduation, Brittany attended Western Illinois University, where she earned her Bachelor's of Science degree in law enforcement and justice administration with a double minor in psychology and sociology. While attending college, Brittany was involved in athletics, admissions, by being an ambassador as well as being a resident assistant. She was a member of the, of a professional law enforcement group where she was active in community service. Prior to graduation in 2018, Brittany obtained employment with the Davenport Police Department. While attending the Iowa Law Enforcement Academy, Brittany was voted Secretary of her class. She enjoys working out, reading, spending time with her family and friends, and her mother, Tricia, will be pinning her badge.
I state your name.
I, Brittany Taylor.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the state of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all duties of a police officer.
Discharge all duties of a police officer.
Of the city of Davenport.
Of the city of Davenport.
County of Scott.
County of Scott.
State of Iowa.
State of Iowa.
As now or hereafter required by law.
As now and hereafter required by law.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Police Officer Nathaniel Mizimer. Nate was born and raised in Burlington, New Jersey. He attended high school in Columbus, New Jersey, afterwards attending Burlington Community College, obtaining his associate's degree in business management in 2007. Nate then moved to Fairbanks, Alaska, and began his law enforcement career with the federal government as a Department of the Army civilian police officer. Nate then worked briefly for the North Pole Police Department, and I'm not making that up.[336.72][336.72](Laughter) I actually asked him during the interview, is that legit? Before moving to Davenport, Iowa in 2015 for the lovely sunshine. He was hired by the Tipton Police Department in Cedar County in 2016, where he obtained his Iowa Law Enforcement Academy certification through examination. Nate worked full-time for the Tipton Police Department, part-time for Wilton Police Department, and seasonally for the Scott County Conservation until he was offered employment with the Davenport Police Department. Nate's spouse, Alyssa, will be pinning his badge.
I state your name.
I, Nathaniel Mizimer.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the state of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all duties of a police officer.
Discharge all duties of a police officer.
Of the city of Davenport.
Of the city of Davenport.
County of Scott.
County of Scott.
State of Iowa.
State of Iowa.
As now or hereafter required by law.
As now or hereafter required by law.
Police Officer Grant Killinger. Grant was raised in Port Byron, Illinois, and is a 2009 graduate, graduate of Riverdale High School. Following high school, Grant enrolled in the criminal justice program at Sauk Valley College in Dixon, Illinois, where he also competed in college's cross-country athletic program. In 2011, Grant transferred to Western Illinois University, the Macomb Campus, where he completed his bachelor's degree in law enforcement and justice administration. After graduation, Grant was hired by the Illinois Department of Corrections and worked as a correctional officer in the East Moline Correctional Center. Grant was hired by the Rock Island County Sheriff's Office in 2015, where he worked as a deputy sheriff within the patrol division, until he was hired by the Davenport Police Department. Pinning his badge will be his girlfriend Jessica.
I state your name.
I, Grant Killinger.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the state of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all duties of a police officer.
Discharge all duties of a police officer.
Of the city of Davenport.
Of the city of Davenport.
County of Scott.
County of Scott.
State of Iowa.
State of Iowa.
And now and hereafter required by law.
And now and hereafter required by law.
Just in closing, thank you for the opportunity, the, and, and the continued support from all of you, and I look forward to the training that these officers are going to be receiving and getting them as full performing officers on the street as soon as we can. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief, and thank you to the entire team. We're going to give a second or two, those, for the proclamations and appointments and swearing in, if anybody would like to leave at this point, please feel free to do so. I think we'll continue at this point. Next on our agenda is petitions and communications from council members and myself, if possible, if, if up to that. Alderman Dickman, Hugh, would you lead the community engagement update?
I would be happy to. For those of you who aren't going out to celebrate tonight, want to make sure that you all know that there are just a ton of things going on this weekend. A couple different events in our downtown Davenport area. There is the Alternating Currents Music Festival. If you haven't had a chance to check that out, our downtown Davenport partnership does a lot of work to put that on, and it's, it's a really good event. During that, there will also be Chalk Fest, which especially if you've got little ones, is a great thing to check out. There is an event going on at the Putnam to celebrate the monarch butterflies. They're going to be doing a whole pollinator event, really good things for the community, things for the globe, we all need our pollinators. And last but not least, school is starting tomorrow for first through 12th graders in Iowa, so look out for that. And kindergarteners are, or sorry, yes, kindergarteners are starting on Friday, and there will be a back-to-school party that is being hosted at Harrington Park on Saturday from noon to 5:00. So go ahead and check that out if, if you're celebrating back-to-school. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Alderman Dickman. Alderman McGinnis.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just wanted to give an update tonight. At the city council meeting two weeks ago, I and others suggested a joint task force between the council and the civil rights commissioners that would permit us to sit down, examine our issues, and work toward improving our communication moving forward. And I wanted to let the council and the public know that I've been moving forward by engaging in one-on-one conversations with individual commissioners, trying to gain their input as to how we might come together as a group. While the process is taking more time than any of us would like, I'll be continuing those efforts in the coming weeks, and I do hope have, to have more to report at the next committee of the whole meeting, which will then, will be on September 3rd. So thank you very much. Bye.
Thank you, Alderman McGinnis. Anyone else? Seeing no one else, we're going to move on to individual approval items on the discussion agenda, and just again, for those who might be new to the process, last week at the committee of the whole, we discussed a long list of items and had possibility of discussion. Items that came forward that didn't have any additional discussion will be later discussed or approved on the consent agenda. Tonight, these are items that we felt needed some more discussion, or open to more discussion. So the first item is a third consideration for ordinance case number REZ 18-08, being the request of William Torscha on behalf of WCT Investments of Davenport Series LLC for rezoning of 6.5 acres, more or less, located along the south of East 53rd Street and east of Lorton Avenue from R1 Low Density Dwelling District to PDD Plan Development District to facilitate commercial development. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak?
Good evening, Mayor, Davenport City Council. My name is Michael Malloy. I'm a Bettendorf attorney who represents residents located on Fairhaven and Lorton Avenue in Davenport, Iowa, south of this proposed rezoning. We started this particular issue approximately eight weeks ago before the Plan and Zone Commission and have appeared before you at each and every committee of the whole and city council meetings since then. We've already stated to you what the issues are regarding our opposition to the rezoning. The issues primarily resolve around the traffic that this rezoning will cause on the neighborhood as well as the stormwater runoff issues. I'm not going to repeat the same statements that we've already made to you folks regarding those issues. I think you have heard those and you understand those. We are proposing ways to mitigate the harmful effect that this particular rezoning will have on the neighborhood peaceful enjoyment of their property. Originally, we came here and requested five conditions that we wanted added to the particular rezoning. The rezoning came to you from the Davenport Plan and Zone Commission with 10 conditions already recommended to be attached to the rezoning. You have that authority as an alderman, as a city council, to add any conditions that you believe are necessary to protect the public regarding this particular rezoning. Since that time, we have dropped three of those issues, and we've whittled those conditions or requests down to two issues remaining. First of all, we would request that you vacate the area south of the intersection of 53rd and Lorton Avenue and install a cul-de-sac at the intersection. Now, I've talked to my clients today, and they understand that a cul-de-sac could be an issue as far as the design and construction of the cul-de-sac. My clients are also willing to accept a dead end at the end of Fairhaven and 53rd Street if a cul-de-sac is impractical from a traffic engineering standpoint. So the letter that you have in front of you, which refers to condition number one as the cul-de-sac, we would agree to it, accept a dead end in lieu of a cul-de-sac to try to reach a solution here that everybody can live with. Second, of course, we're asking for the block topping of Lorton Avenue from 53rd Street down to 46th Street. As you know, the present condition of Lorton Avenue, which was annexed into the city as a county road, is deteriorated. We're not asking for curbs and gutters. We're not asking for anything except for the re-block topping. We believe that the street needs some maintenance that has been neglected, and this could be a good time for the city of Davenport to do that maintenance. We're asking you to consider these two conditions to try to make this a win-win situation if you do approve this rezoning. By adding these two conditions, by which any of you aldermen, including sixth ward aldermen, can make a motion to add those two conditions to the rezoning, once the rezoning comes up for a vote before the city council tonight. We ask you to please add those two conditions to alleviate the issues surrounding this rezoning on the neighborhood. Thank you very much for your time and attention.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this issue?
Hello, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Charlotte McManus, and I reside with my husband Craig, 4728 Lorton. And I think you know my story pretty well, but I'm going to just repeat it a little bit. We moved to Lorton Avenue in 1972, and since then, we've added, we have almost three acres. Beautiful, beautiful, beautiful facility, beautiful home, beautiful, everything that I just consider, as you all know, my paradise. But I'm so worried. Before I go on, though, I have to say something. I'm so happy to be here to wish Ms. Iowa well. You know, I was executive director of the Ms. Iowa Pageant during the 1980s, and I know what it takes to become Ms. Iowa or Ms. America, and I will be rooting for her. She seems like a wonderful person. But I'm not going, I'll be brief tonight. I am going to, you all know how I feel about this. I really do love my neighborhood. I love my neighbors. I love all, everything about it, and I do worry. I think it's going to be a nightmare for, I think, the speeding cars, and I know you talk about having people set up to see what this, what the traffic is going to be. Just don't do it in January or February. Do it at a, at a good time. I think the crime will increase. The water runoff is going to be bad, too. And I have to say this, I, I'm worried about our lower property values, which is important to my family. Mike Malloy has done a very good job, and he's reiterated what we want in, in our desires, and was hoping you will agree to some of that. And I will be very, I, I'm very respectful in my wishes to, I wish you would consider this, but I want you to know, people are very aware in this community, especially Windsor Crest, some of the areas. Wherever I go, whether it's a grocery store, drugstore, restaurants, garage sales, people come up to me and say, "Oh, I've seen you on television. I've heard you talk about what's going on, and we know, we hate 53rd right now and what's going on. We don't even want to go there." And they said, "What do you plan to do, or what can you do?" Well, we have to rely on the city to help us, but you can also do something. You know, next time you vote, take a look at who you're voting for. See what they, what they feel on, on their neighbor, on supporting neighborhoods instead of massive developers. But they are, they, they, they know, and they are concerned. You know, I want to read something. I'm not going to go on and on in this. You know how I feel, and I want you to help us, and I'm asking you to help us in some capacity. This was, article was written, and I think you have a copy of it, was, came out in, on the, from the Closetty Times, July 8th. And it's entitled, "Davenport Too Eager to Grow." At Monday's meeting of Davenport's Planning and Zoning Board, a gentleman from Chicago, a Portillo supporter, made a remark that hits the nail right on the head. He stated, "A city has an obligation and duty to make sure that adequate infrastructure improvements are made prior to construction projects being implemented. With the Portillo and Costco project, 53rd Street is totally non-functional both by road design and physical condition of the street. A neighborhood that once enjoyed the beauty of small streams running as the rain fell have been replaced by rampaging water that now is received by ever-expanding ravines. Flooding is a problem. During the most recent rainstorm, it was noted that hoses and pumps were seen pumping water from the Costco retention pond into the adjourning apartment's retention pond. Five days later, Lorton Avenue still had running water on the street surface. Pointedly, Davenport officials, if you are to continue with massive building projects, please fix the interest, infrastructure of streets and flood control. Davenport, please slow down your rush to development," as another man said on Monday, Craig McManus, Davenport." Not going to go on. I am disturbed, I was very disillusioned after I heard a lot of your comments the last two weeks, and I kind of knew nowhere we had it, even though the mayor said no definite decisions had been made. But I'm not an, I'm, I'm an intelligent woman, I know what's going on. The only thing I'm going to say, as I, I did say something two weeks ago, that our church always says, when we feel that we are not good enough, that we have not done enough, go forth and do what is right, and, and do what is just for all. And I think that's just a great statement and a great way to end this. And my, my thought is, I hope you can help us on Lorton, 51st, Fairhaven, and all the area. We appreciate your time and thank you for listening to me.
Thank you very much. Anyone else want to speak on this issue? Yes, ma'am?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Tina Schindler, and my siblings, my mother and I, own property and homes at 2701, 2719, and 2733 East 53rd Street. We have been on 53rd Street and part of the Hanlon addition for over 60 years, 1956. Back when our father first built our family home, it was just a little country road, and that, that there were farms all around the Hanlon addition. As you all can see, that's no longer the case. We now have four lanes of traffic, soon to be five, with thousands of cars going by us daily, and are directly across, obviously, from the new Costco. Along the way, even before Costco, since the interchange was put on 53rd, we learned to adapt to the changes around us. We learned we could no longer walk or even run across the street to say hi to our neighbors. We had to get in our cars, drive down the street, turn around, and come back so that we could make a right turn to go visit them. We learned that our kids, as we as children did not play in the street, but our kids could not even play in the front yards. And we learned eventually not to use the front yards at all. We learned that we could rarely, if ever, turn left out of our driveways, and now even turning right is a challenge. Some of that hopefully will change when the construction is done. Most importantly, we learned to mow the front boulevard at the least dangerous times of the day, Sunday mornings, late at night, and to shovel the six-foot sidewalk in the middle of the night. Not shovel, we had to buy a bobcat to clear it. We are sure that none of those that are opposed to this rezoning would like to change places with us. We understand their concerns about future traffic and safety. However, any perceived increase in traffic will never be anything remotely close to what we have endured for the last few years. Do we wish things were different? Of course. We loved our neighborhood. We love our homes. My father built them both. And just like our dear friends from the farm across the street, who we know stayed as long as they could, we have stayed as long as we can. We have many cherished lifelong friends in the Hanlon addition. Some might say that we could have sold our homes at any time, but we loved our homes that much, and we would not have remained there for 60-plus years. The only parties interested in the homes and properties in the last 15-plus years were investors and speculators. If we had sold before, these rezoning requests would have come a lot sooner and probably not have been as organized. We have delayed the inevitable as long as we can. The very sad reality is that the 2700 block of East 53rd Street is no longer appropriate for family homes. Mr. Torscha has proposed a viable commercial development appropriate to the area and to Davenport. He has met with neighbors bordering the properties, and, the neighbors bordering the properties, and actively addressed water runoff, safety, and landscaping concerns with these neighbors. We thank him and appreciate that. We hope that the council approves the rezoning request, and we truly hope if the rezoning is approved and potential traffic increases realized, that you will find a viable traffic solution that works well for all of our neighbors. My last comment would be that whatever we may or may not receive for the selling of our property is of no concern to anyone other than our family, nor does this information have any bearing whatsoever on the considerations before the council on the rezoning of 53rd Street or the vacation of Fairhaven Road. And I bring that up because it was brought up by other speakers several times previously. I thank you for your attention very much.
Thank you very much. Is there someone else who would like to speak on this issue?
Patricia Bruner, 4840 Fairhaven Court. It's been a long 10 weeks, but at the end of the 10 weeks, I still have three concerns that I don't feel like are really adequately mitigated. I do hear the concerns of the person who spoke before me. My biggest concern is that we continue to cause problems for other residents of Davenport. So you caused a problem for the residents that lived directly on 53rd by allowing the developments that you did? And now you're pushing the problems further into our residential area, causing problems for a bigger group of people. I understand that their homes are not the best solution. I feel for them. I truly do. I totally understand their problem. But what I'm asking is that you make a plan that helps everyone and not just the five or however many houses on 53rd. So my concerns still are water. So last week, we talked about exactly how much water runoff would come from the development. I was curious if anyone from city staff went out and measured the ditches to make sure that all the ditches could handle this much water? Because that's a concern to me. I know the developer measured one ditch. But are all the ditches big enough? And if so, who do we hold accountable? Throughout these 10 weeks, I've heard many people point fingers at prior aldermen. While I wasn't on staff then, I don't know. That's how things used to be. The solution I see to this problem of our turnover in aldermen is that we follow a plan. And my, the best resolution to this is to follow the 2035 plan. It makes a, a, a way for the city council to be held accountable, to follow a plan, and it helps residents and developers make adequate plans so that we can all live together in the city. The next big issue I've, I've had and I still have is the buffer step-down approach. So I've asked many times why other developments get a step-down approach and mine doesn't. Last week, I was told it's because we have an adequate buffer. That adequate buffer is 25 feet and a six-foot vinyl fence. I Googled, what, what blocks sound? And a vinyl fence, unless it has some type of extra material for sound barrier, is not an adequate option. And if this really was an adequate option, I don't think we'd be here every week until 9:30, listening to zoning requests after zoning requests and problem after problem. We could tell the hair salon that if they put up a six-foot fence, they can have a drive-through and any zoning that they want, right? I mean, so we're setting a precedent here, that you put up a six-foot fence and you can have whatever you want. Two drive-throughs, two other busy restaurants, 400 cars in and out every day. But it doesn't matter 'cause you have a six-foot fence. You know, I was sitting there picturing my life this morning, you know, what my, my area will look like. And I was like, you know what? If Fairhaven stayed open and I had this cute little salon down the road and maybe a cute little restaurant that sold baked goods or a brewery even, I mean, I like beer. It'd be awesome to walk down the road and enjoy what was near me. But instead, I get four busy restaurants that are so busy that there's gonna be traffic congestion and a six-foot fence needed. That means I can't even enjoy what's in my backyard. Not that I would want to. I don't want to go to any of these establishments. And I can't. It would be really great to just have a simple addition, take, come in and take over these five homes or however many on 53rd, something that I could actually enjoy. But instead, it's going to be a headache. And I still have concerns with the infrastructure. We just saw all these great police officers here tonight. I'm so proud of them. They are doing a great thing for our community. And I really hope that we don't have to use any of them for traffic problems. Because that is a sincere waste of their time. We need these police officers to take care of problems across Davenport. I'm, I'm literally scared to run in Davenport anymore. I've filed police reports. I don't feel safe on the roads, whether it's traffic or crime. I hope our police officers are there to do the right thing and not control traffic because we let developers build when there's not correct infrastructure.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wanna speak on this issue?
Good evening. Adam Bruner, 4840 Fairhaven Court. So a couple of things. If you do consider the amendment to block top, there's more than one road in this neighborhood. So if you can make sure that 51st and Fairhaven is also included, that'd be wonderful. As far as traffic is concerned, coming in and out of the neighborhood, that is a concern. I'd still like to access 53rd, both exiting and entering. So that's a voice of some other residents in the neighborhood as well. So make sure that you hear that there's more than one voice. There had been a consideration to do a traffic study for a year. That speed limiter is no longer working. It only shows a quarter of the digits that show up on the screen. It's only tracking traffic from the south to the north. And I think what you've heard is the majority of the consideration from the residents is the traffic from the north to the south. So if we could also get an additional speed monitor heading in the opposite direction, so we have both directions taken into consideration, that would be wonderful. Water runoff, constant concern that you keep hearing. I'd really like to see a plan amendment from the city to have direct ditching, directly into the ditch from both sides of the Portillo's development, as well as an improved ditch from where the exit of the Portillo's development is all the way to the creek. I'd like to hear some plans on how we could potentially fund that or what considerations we've done to try to work around that particular idea. I was driving home a little bit later than normal the other night. And I was just trying to think of, as I was sitting for two or three minutes, trying to turn left off of 53rd into Fairhaven, what that construction outlook's gonna look like over the next, you know, year and a half or so. So you got Costco, that's in full swing right now, shutting off the road, I don't know, once every three weeks. And so you're down to three lanes, one heading away from the main vein, which is 74, taking traffic back north into Davenport. Then you got Costco's gonna finish up. They're gonna be in full swing. Free memberships for three months, blah, 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 gasoline discounts, trying to get people in there. And right about that time, if you were to approve this rezoning, I'd assume they'd be breaking ground for the Portillo's development. So now you got full swing Costco with all this Portillo's construction going on. Portillo's construction's about to finish. And guess what's right around the corner? We're gonna redo 53rd and put five lanes in. Man, I'm just, I'm really looking forward to my next 18 months to 24 months on Fairhaven Road. So I just ask that maybe you consider what the development plan looks like if you do rezone, potentially adding an amendment to defer development until, or at least do it all at the same time for that section of 53rd and the development of Portillo, so we don't get hit three times, right, in a year and a half to two years. That's all. Thank you very much for your time over the past 10 weeks. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this issue?
Hi. Lisa Van Damme, 2771 East 51st. And I definitely, definitely want you to make sure that there is some sort of water program set up before all of this begins. The ditches cannot hold the water. They go straight to my house. My ditches get it all, my whole corner. Did all of you get to see the tape, the thumb drive that I submitted? Rich said he did at our meeting that we had personally and everything. If not, I've got a laptop here that'll show. My whole yard flooded. Goes down the side of my fence to the backyard and makes a pond in my backyard before it cuts across the neighbor's backyard to the creek. That is not a water system. These ditches, when they're filled up, could drown a child easily. This happened now, since Costco's up there and working, it was even worse. The corner of our house, where the two fences are, it hadn't come under. It was going under the trampoline, cutting across the corner of my yard to get to that creek. It's not gonna work. Something has to be done about the water. The streets, the way they are, they dip and everything. It runs along the street. It doesn't go in the ditches. It's running down the street and takes the corner of the street and turns and comes right in my driveway. I'm keeping all the proof on tape. Something's gotta be done.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this topic?
Good evening. Candy Pasternak, resident of the 6th Ward. I am employed in the 3rd Ward. Again, here on behalf of the developer, WCT Investments, Davenport Series LLC. First and foremost, thank you for the attention that you've provided to this project over the last six weeks and then the two weeks before with the planning and zoning. Obviously, the developer is here in support of the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation to the council to approve the rezoning of this area from the R1 low-density zoning that currently exists to the PDD rezoning proposed. As noted by staff, the proposed commercial use that has been submitted and approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission is consistent with the, and will comply with, the Davenport 2035 Future Land Use map. And the commercial corridor that has been created on the East 53rd Street strip of, well, vast expanse of East 53rd. The rezoning conditions that you've heard mentioned by some of the protesters related to the 10 conditions imposed by the Planning and Zoning Commission, I believe the council has received communication, written communication from the developer acknowledging their acquiescence and agreement to comply with those conditions in this development. Again, one of the things to note is that the protest rate was only 7.4%. And, and finally, I think that the staff report addresses many of the concerns that the protesters have made and, and addressed the traffic issues. Again, at the last committee of the whole meeting, the developer presented the stormwater detention plan system that they will be using and described that for you in detail. As a result, it is our request that the council support the recommendation and approve the rezoning as recommended by planning and zoning. And again, we thank you for the time that you've committed to this.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this item?
Good evening. My name is Kristy Bennett Reed. I live at 4919 Lorton Avenue. If you would please allow me to put you in a different place and using your imagination, please try to see things from my point of view. Imagine if you would, if you sold your nice house in Bettendorf and bought a badly neglected property on Lorton Street in Davenport. A house that sits on just short of an acre, a place that you've worked on, developed and love it because of its great location on a quiet street, the large pool in the backyard and deer that run through on most evenings all year long. In fact, imagine if you loved this home so much that you chose to get married in the backyard last Wednesday and host a celebration of your marriage in the backyard this past Saturday. Imagine if you enjoyed a therapeutic walk three to four times a week along the street that runs by your home. Imagine living in your dream home. Now imagine if your city council decided that they would change your serene setting and place a fast-food drive-through restaurant that's open until midnight, close to your home. Imagine your city council, the ones that should be on your side, would make comments to you like, "Nothing is as bad as it seems. And let's make you wait a year to see what the traffic flow is going to be like. Or this should not affect the value of your home." When in fact, it doesn't take a professional realtor to know that no one wants to live by a drive-through, open until midnight, fast-food restaurant. Or you've heard one say, "The developer will take care of the wa, water issues that may be caused by this fast-food restaurant." But they didn't address the other three restaurants that will also be built there. And keep imagining, traffic will undoubtedly increase. With the drive-through being open until midnight, the noise will be undoubtedly present until midnight as well. Without question, as you can imagine, the street will be much busier. And because there's no sidewalks, there will be no more walking along the road. I agree with the McManuses. Sooner or later, someone is going to get hurt. And I don't want that someone to be me. Imagine this, if this was you. But I'm not imagining these things. This is about ready to be reality for me. Me, my neighbors, every single person I've talked to, four of the nine Davenport Planning and Zoning Committee members that voted against the rezoning of the proposed development, they did that for a reason. We all know this is not the right location for it. I ask you tonight, if you can imagine any of these points, you should vote for the people, not the fast-food, drive-through, open until midnight restaurant on the corner of 53rd and Lorton. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wanna speak on this, on this item? Seeing no one, uh, been moved and seconded to move the consideration. Is there any discussion from the alderman? Seeing none, uh, yes, I do. Rick Alderman Clul.
Thank you, Mayor. It's been an interesting 10 weeks. And I thank all of you residents from Lorton, 51st and Fairhaven for, for being here and talking. And, you know, Kristy's thoughts, I thought was very interesting. It reminds me of a plan and zoning presentation that Commissioner Kellen gave a couple of weeks ago. Hypothetical, what if, what if we were in your shoes? I think that's very effective. It, and I was thinking of that as you were speaking. And I was thinking, you know, what is it like to be out there in the audience versus what it's like to be up here in the dais? You've elected all of us that are sitting up here to represent you as a whole of Davenport. Justice for all, not for some, but for all. And, and, and I think, have they listened? Have they, have they heard? I mean, we've, we've said these things over and over, but we keep hearing the same thing from the folks up here behind this table. They don't seem to be hearing or understanding, perhaps even listening. I have listened. And, and I appreciate Attorney Malloy and his constituency, and his, the clients that he represents, having come forward, having moved from five conditions and, and having been very considerate and saying, "Okay, you can't do the five. What about these two, which are most important to us?" Those two conditions being, won the, the vacation of 53rd and Lorton during a special meeting back on, I think it was July 11th. We, we talked about that and considered vacating that. That was the primary reason that I held that meeting. And I know we talked about some other issues as well, but that was the primary issue before us. I did that because I wanted to make sure that there was consensus in the neighborhood. And there was not. Some people feel very strongly that they want that left open. There were concerns about response time for emergency vehicles, et cetera. So it was my, my decision at that point to say, "Well, I have to do something. But I, and I can't do nothing." So as I proposed, uh, two cycles ago, we prepared a draft resolution saying that within a year's time, we will come forward with, the staff will come forward with a recommendation based on traffic studies of what we might do should traffic become a significant issue and traffic is going to increase. There's no doubt about it. And, and God forbid that an accident does occur. But I think that we need to make this decision based on, on, on facts, on data, rather than making this decision too soon. And I know that those of you on Lorton are most displeased with that. I understand that. But at the end of the day, we all walk away from here saying, "I did the best I could." Maybe I could've done better in retrospect, but I'm doing the best that I can at this point. There was, you know, discussion about water. Water is, is a legacy issue there on Lorton and, and. Water is a legacy issue there on Lorton and Fairhaven. Staff has gone out, the culvert was at one point blocked, that culvert has been unblocked, and they're going to put a regular schedule of maintenance watching those culverts there on Lorton. There, you know, I thought, so the legacy issues are important, and those are things that we're going to be looking after. I think, you know, one of, we have a developer who is coming in here, and I haven't had a lot of experience with developers, but from what I've seen over the last seven or eight months and talking with people, these folks are doing the right thing. I have a lot of faith in Amy Kay, Amy Kay, one of our staff. She's a young water specialist, and I think a graduate of Iowa State, as I am. And I think that she's looked at this system that is being proposed. I think it's top-notch, it's one that's been used at St. Ambrose. It's made to hold a 100-year event. They're based on our water management plans that we've created here, just approved about a couple of months ago. No more water will come off that property than is currently coming off. I think those are stringent water plans, I think they're good plans. So come 100-year event, there may be increased water flow, there may be. We're gonna have to watch that. But I think the issues, the legacy issues are things that I, as a Sixth Ward Alderman, am going to continue to watch over because, as a couple of people said, there's, Attorney Malloy talked about mitigating the impacts. There will be impacts. And as a Sixth Ward Alderman, it's my responsibility to make sure that those impacts are minimal because it is, again, a decision that is made as a Sixth Ward Alderman, but also recognizing all the constituents in the Sixth Ward and all of Davenport. It is not Lorton 51st and Fairhaven alone, it's all of us are involved with this. But I am responsible to you in that area, and I will continue to work to make sure that those impacts are mitigated. So in one year's time, we will have a study done. And at that time, staff will make a recommendation on how to proceed with dealing with the traffic in that area. I do, and one ways are certainly a possibility in regards to that as well. So that's the vacation of Lorton, that was one of the conditions, and that's where I stand on that issue. The second issue being repair of the streets. The city has a program that they work with the state every year, where they go out and review all the roads in the city, amazingly enough. And there's a very objective basis on which they make decisions of where the priority comes out for roads to be repaired. Lorton has not met that condition at this point. So on the numbers, on the data, Lorton just has not come up to the top for repair. Now, it's built to county standards and traveling that road. What I see is a problem mostly with the road edges. The road edges are disintegrating and going into people's yards, and that's an issue that I'm continuing to work with Public Works on, and I'm not sure exactly how we're gonna deal with that issue, but it is a concern, I recognize it. But as far as repaving Lorton or Fairhaven and 51st, as the other gentleman said, that's, it just hasn't reached a priority level yet. So it is something that during the CPI, it will certainly stand up for because, as folks have noted, there is some deterioration along the road edges that needs to be rectified. So again, just in closing, at the end of the day, I walk away saying that I did the best I could. I did listen to everybody, and I put all the facts, all the emotions into the calculus. And for me, the best thing for Sixth Ward, the best thing for Davenport is to move forward with this development. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Clul. Alderman Dickman.
Thank you, Your Honor. Real quick first, wanted to make sure that staff heard that the speed indicator is not got it, and then also the request to have one in both directions, because I know we do have that in some locations. So that's the first thing. The second thing is that I was thinking about the 10 conditions that were put in place by our Planning and Zoning Commission. And I think that the conditions is one of the most vital functions of our Planning and Zoning Board, is that they are approached usually with a request from a developer, and they have to find that middle ground between, we wanna develop this land and have no scaffolding on what we're allowed to do and not allowed to do. And then residents' concerns of, usually we would prefer you didn't change anything. And so when they came up with those conditions, and then also things like the water management, as Alderman Clul just referenced, that those are the things that we as a council are able to put in place to protect residents while still being adaptive to requests that are made of the city. I don't think that there's ever a 100% everyone is happy solution. I hope that we are close, as close as we can get. And that as much as is possible, you know, we don't wanna be all just pro-business or all just stifling growth to prevent any problems with changing things around our residences, that this is, sometimes we just have to, we have to do our best, I guess, where we're at. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Dickman. Alderman Tompkins.
Thank you, Your Honor. I will be brief. I just wanted to thank Alderman Clul for taking this on. He is new, one of our newer council members, and this has certainly been a trying time for him. I think he's done a really good job of working with the neighbors and staff, and I appreciate that, appreciate the neighbors and everybody coming down. And as it's been said, I hope that, although it's difficult to get to a win-win in some circumstances, but hopefully we can get as close as we can. So thank you so much for your leadership on this.
Thank you, Alderman Tompkins. Are there any other questions by any council members? Seeing none, will the clerk call the roll on the third consideration of the ordinance?
Mattson.
Yes.
Grip.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Clul.
Yes.
Tompkins.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Ambrose.
Yes.
Condon.
Yes.
Dickman.
Yes.
Ten, oh, excuse me, nine yeses, Your Honor.
Thank you, and the ordinance is adopted. The next item is a third consideration for ordinance for case number ROW 18-01, being the request of William Torsia on behalf of WCT Investments, Davenport Series LLC, for the vacation or abandonment of .34 acres, more or less of right-of-way known as Fairhaven Road, extending approximately 285 feet south from East 53rd Street to facilitate commercial development. Is there anyone from the public who want to speak on this item?
Good evening, Mayor. Davenport City Council. My name is Michael Malloy. I'm representing a dozen or more residents located on Lorton Avenue in Fairhaven concerning this particular vacation issue in conjunction with the rezoning. I've just heard you pass the third consideration of the rezoning of this property. And now we're at the third consideration of a companion ordinance to vacate approximately 15,000 square feet of public right-of-way, about a third of an acre, and for this particular development. And I would again suggest to you that if you're going to vacate this particular property on Fairhaven, then the same standard ought to be applied to Lorton. And I've heard the Sixth Ward Alderman talk about a traffic study that you're going to supposedly implement in the next 12 months on Lorton. However, I haven't heard of anything about any traffic study being done on Fairhaven before it's vacated. And so it seems like you ought to treat Lorton Avenue and Fairhaven on the same standard. And you're not applying that same standard, ladies and gentlemen. You're applying different standards to Fairhaven than you're applying to Lorton. You need to think about what you're doing here, and if you do vacate Fairhaven, you can still add a motion to reconsider your ordinance approval with the same condition added to Lorton Avenue. I would suggest that what's good for the goose is good for the gander here. These are both public right-of-way streets. You seem intent on vacating or closing one off tonight as public right-of-way, but you're not going to apply those same standards to Lorton. I would suggest that you should apply the same standards to Lorton. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who want to speak on this item?
Good evening. My name's Dialg Yelmore, and I live in the Sixth Ward. Although vote on the last consideration was a disappointment to some, I don't think it was really a surprise to anyone. The same will be true of this consideration. On behalf of the neighbors and being paid by no one, I ask the ward aldermen to request signage from Public Works, limiting truck traffic on Fairhaven and Lorton. Something like no trucks, weight limit 10,000 pounds, violators will be subject to a fine of up to $10,000. That should discourage any violators. I have a feeling that once demolition on the homes on 53rd begins, the truck hauling the scrap materials will find it most convenient to drive down Fairhaven or Lorton rather than to fight the truck traffic to get onto 53rd. Even if they do decide to fight the traffic on 53rd, I believe many will find the traffic, I believe many will find the empty return trip up Lorton from 46th Street as most convenient. So don't forget the signage on Lorton at 46th, too. Lorton's in bad enough shape already. Please do everything possible to protect it from additional damage from the heavy trucks. If you're not going to protect the neighbors, at least protect the streets. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak on this item?
Adam Brunner, 4840 Fairhaven Court. Just one ask, for the love of all of Davenport, could you connect QC Mart to Portillo's? It'd be a heck of a lot easier for people to get in and out and have multiple options to exit in and out. That's my only ask, is, as aldermen add that amendment into the vacation, is to have them connected as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am, your name and address, please.
Lisa Van Damme, 2717 East 51st, 2771 East 51st Street. Somebody made mention that they had cleared the culverts out after we had some storm problems. When was that? We had a little flash rain last week, and I was totally flooded again, and I have that on my computer, too, last week.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak on this item? Is there a second? There's a motion, a second. Any discussion from any aldermen? Alderman Clul.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things. That flooding, I'm not sure why it happened, but I've been assured by staff that the culverts are not the reason. We'll continue to study the area and the water flow as it goes through your yard. I'm concerned about that as well. Terms of mitigation, you know, I'm not proposing that we wait for a year to see what the results of this traffic study are. There are things that we can do in the interim, certainly looking at signage is one of those. The one, the possibility of limiting traffic through that area is something that we've talked about. And the other thing, just in regards to that sign out there, I just want everybody to know that there's an app called YourGov. You go take a picture of that sign, send it to Public Works on YourGov, and they'll take care of it very quickly. I've used that before, so it's very useful. And this is part of empowering citizens to be able to do the kinds of things. You don't have to wait and call an alderman to make those kinds of things happen. That's right at your fingertips, so, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Clul. Anyone else? Will the clerk call the roll for a third consideration of the ordinance?
Grip.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Clul.
Yes.
Tompkins.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Ambrose.
Yes.
Condon.
Yes.
Dickman.
Yes.
Mattson.
Yes.
Nine yeses, Your Honor.
Thank you very much, and that ordinance is adopted. Our next item is the second consideration for ordinance case number REZ 18-09, being the request of Jared Engler on behalf of McCarthy Improvement Company for the rezoning of 1.5 acres, more or less, located at the northeast corner of Utica Ridge Road and 56th Street, from a CO office shop district to C1 neighborhood shopping district to facilitate commercial development. Is there any public with comments on this item? Yes, ma'am, your name and address, please.
My name is Valerie Fraus, and my husband and I own a villa in the Villas of Crow Valley. We're on the south side of 58th Street, and we're in the Sixth Ward. We know that many of our homeowners have been sending letters to city staff and to you personally. I want to thank the council members who responded to the emails that many of our neighbors have sent, expressing our concerns about the rezoning request of Lot 1 from CO to C1. As our representatives in city government, I appreciate that you're hearing and responding to our concerns as the vote on this proposal approaches. There is a statistic quoted at the August 1 city council meeting, giving a low percentage protest rate to the proposed rezoning request of Lot 1. To get a more accurate view of the opposition within the Villas of Crow Valley, a petition was circulated by neighbors to neighbors. Of our neighborhood, 11% were not available, 8% did not want to sign, and 17% were not approached, 64% were opposed to the rezoning request. There are 24 homes directly adjacent to the undeveloped land. You have a map of this area, which you were given. And the map is outlined in red, the 24 homes are outlined in yellow. At least 83% of these homes are opposed. We are surrounded by a lot of land left to be developed, including much of 56th Street and both sides of 58th Street, which leads directly into our community. This truly is a residential area. We have a large number of people who walk our loop between 58th and 59th Streets up to Utica Ridge Road. We have children in the neighborhood who ride their bikes, grandparents who walk visiting grandchildren in strollers, trikes, and even big wheels. My husband and I are very concerned that if Lot 1 is rezoned to C1, it will open the door to rezoning requests for the remaining lots, thus enveloping our entire community with the possibility of taverns, brew pubs, and restaurants instead of the medical clinics and offices we thought would be built when we purchased our property. We do not want our streets to become thoroughfares and the back of our homes to be flooded with bright lights, still all ours. I also want to state, our opposition is not a reflection on the developer, his family, or corporation. They have been and continue to be well-respected in our community and the Quads Cities as a whole. It is also not an attack on the owners of pure. It's a matter of keeping the land surrounding our homes zoned the same way as when we purchased them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who want to speak on this item? Yes, sir? Your name and address, please.
Dennis Kramer. My wife and I live in the Villas of Crow Valley in the Sixth Ward. First about Stacy Spillam and her salon business. We actually do admire her spirit, her drive, and her hard work. It's the American dream, and she's going for it, and that's great. We truly do want her salon business to succeed and welcome her to build her business on Lot 1. It really is a perfect fit for our neighborhood. We heard her talk about projections of almost doubling her salon business, sales, employees, customers, taxes, et cetera, and that's great. But what we didn't hear was something like, "I have to have two tenants, and they have to have C1 zoning for my salon to be successful." I'd think that the petitioner or the business owner should have to justify the need for the zoning change with a compelling reason, a burden of proof, so to speak, and explain why they have to have the zone changed, not just that they want it, especially since the far majority of the neighborhood is opposed to it due to its potential far-reaching impacts. Now, I'll be the first to admit, I'm probably naive and or uninformed about the city development process, but on the Davenport website, I can't find a documented city development vision or a development plan for the future for any open land in the city and in particular for this area. To me, I'd think there should be. I get that things change, as one of you mentioned, but that should be in terms of trends. So as you see trends changing, update the vision and the plan every year or two so that everyone can see it and understand it. Then we, as residents, can plan where we live, and we can make informed decisions. And when a zoning change request like this comes in, then you can determine if it's consistent with that plan. Don't just change zonings on the fly when someone comes to you like this and wants it changed because it suits them. The plan should drive- The plan should drive the development. It seems like the tail's wagging the dog here. There should be no surprises to residents like this. Now we're realistic that McCarthy-Bush is in business for profit and if this zone rezoning passes, they know they'll likely be able to get the rest of their zone, rest of their land rezoned to C1, which then allows the taverns, the brew pubs, the restaurants and retail stores, the types of business that sell land. We get it. It's obvious, it's part of their plan. They've already said as much that they'll be back here for more zoning changes. And as you surely know, that is what really our fear is. The real reason that most of us in the neighborhood oppose this request. We're also realistic that from some of your comments that it sounds like this might pass. We're new to this development process, but it just seems that to us that if you pass this request, it'll be very hard for you to turn down the next C1 request for the rest of the six plus one acres and then further east onto 56th Street into the land that now belongs to Riverstone Corporation in the red zone as you can see on your map. And as you may know, they are already in the process of replating that land. So there's a good chance they'll be in here soon asking for a rezone too. We do appreciate Mr. Bush saying that they'd be careful not to hurt the neighborhood's quiet lifestyle and home values as his families live here too. We know that. My wife and I don't know any of the Bush family personally and I'm sure they're good people. But none of them own any of the 24 homes up against the red zone on your map. The homes most at risk for the smells, the noise, the lights that C1 businesses can literally bring right up to our back doors. And we do appreciate our alderman's comment about resisting changes to C1 for land that back up against our homes in that red zone. We believe that he's sincere in that also. But he's only one vote and he may decide not to be on the council in the future. Finally, we realize you have a tough job as a council. You do. And we do appreciate what you do for us. So all we can respectfully ask of each of you is to be an independent thinker and independent voter on this. We know technically, and we've heard it, quote, "This is only about this one lot." But realistically, it is part of a bigger picture. This area around North Utica, 56th and 58th, to our knowledge, was not planned to be a mini corridor, commercial corridor like 53rd Street. It is different. We ask that you, to not let it become one, please don't open that door and allow the breweries, restaurants, outside or open bedroom windows at night and decline this request. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Yes ma'am? Your name and address please.
Thank you, Your Honor. My name is Patricia Harris and I'm a resident of the Villas of Crow Valley in the 6th Ward. Mr. Mayor and members of the council, I want to present comments relating also to the criteria for rezoning. Having engaged in the rezoning process for the last couple of months, I can honestly say I'm not really sure what that criteria is and people do seem to have different views about it. I can only offer my view. Tonight I will focus on three statements that have been offered in support of the rezoning. First, it has been said there was an attempt to find common ground that led to a compromise. The city staff report to the Plan and Zoning Commission recommending the revised petition move forward is predicated on that. It states there has been an effort to find common ground and the staff supports this compromise. I agree, a second neighborhood meeting was held and there was a lot of discussion. I do think it's fair to say that people who attended the meeting could reasonably differ on what exactly the common ground or the compromise was. Petitioner referred to rezoning only Lot 1. Its PowerPoint referred only to Lot 1 and there was no reference to the other lots. Maybe people heard petitioner confirm its plan to later seek rezoning of the remaining lots and maybe they didn't. Maybe it mattered to them or maybe it wouldn't have mattered to them in the circumstances, it's just hard to know. There was no vote and it's also hard to know how many opposed the C1 Lot 1 plan as they understood it and how many didn't. Plus not everybody was able to attend the meeting. A number of interested residents had a conflict. Now we have more clarity. There was a poll of the Villa of Crow Valley homeowners. At least two-thirds of those households opposed the petition as revised to Lot 1C1 with limited use restrictions. And as you heard, over 80% of the households adjoining undeveloped property oppose it. Second, it has been said this fits in with the Utica Ridge corridor, but I am not sure I see how. Almost everything half a mile north of Lot 1 along Utica Ridge is fully developed as residential with minor exceptions. Starting at Lot 1 and heading north along Utica Ridge, on the right you pass the Villas of Crow Valley, a subdivision of East 60th. If you peek around the corner, there's an engineering consulting office. It seems perfectly happy there. More homes at East 61st Street Court, the Blackbird Commons. There's a maintenance shed for the Crow Valley Golf Course and the Brookwood subdivision. And then turning around, heading south again, you pass on the right Walsh Point subdivision, which is newer, and then the Lake Hurst subdivision. To the south of Lot 1 along Utica Ridge, the closest eating and drinking establishments are basically half a mile away. From Lot 1, between East 65th and East 58th Streets, you have to cross the light at East 53rd, drive past a bank on one corner and a Walgreens on the other corner, before you land at Biagi's and Bad Boys Pizza. In between East 56th and East 53rd is a buffer. Starting at Lot 1 heading south, you have on the left, along the east side of Utica Ridge, a large office park. You pass a small retail shop, professional shops, a hair salon, several banks, a vacant lot, another bank. Then turning back at that intersection along Utica Ridge, you have the Hy-Vee parking lot, Hy-Vee facing East 53rd, office buildings before ending at RK Dixon across the street from Lot 1. An eating or drinking establishment on Lot 1 would be incongruent with that one-mile stretch on either side. Half a mile to the north, half a mile to the south on the Utica Ridge corridor. Third, it has been said over time, the situation has changed, but I don't see how. I have lived there the last 10 years and the corridor has been pretty much the same. I believe by denying the petition, you will be making a sound decision that meets at least six key criteria. First, it's based on facts, not emotions, I heard that from the last meeting, relevant to zoning. Two, it reflects public input. Three, it's harmonious with the surrounding development, consistent with the C0 zoning ordinance. Four, it in no way impedes development or the creation of new opportunities for development. Five, it's consistent with the city's zoning philosophy as I understand it from the Davenport zoning ordinance rewrite website, directing investment to targeted areas and helping make Davenport both a livable and business-friendly community. Last, sixth, I believe denying the petition is consistent with citizens' reasonable expectations around zoning predictability and continuity in circumstances like ours. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Does anyone else from the public would like to talk on this item?
Good evening, I'm Connie Jones. I also live at the Villas of Crow Valley in the 6th Ward, Mr. Mayor, council members and as well citizens. I relocated from Raleigh, North Carolina, making me a first-time resident of Davenport at that time. Can you indulge me for a minute? While living in Raleigh, I couldn't help but be impressed by the Research Triangle Park. You may have heard of this as the largest high-tech research and life sciences complex in the United States. This office park spans some six miles. Think about that, nearly the length of the BICs. Created in collaboration between private development, local universities and government. These leaders saw traditional industries in decline, sought to increase innovation, leverage the local universities and keep graduates in the state. The founders believed that profits could not be the only driver. The betterment of the community should be the key goal. This petition we're discussing tonight and the surrounding C0 lots covers obviously not six miles but probably closer to six tenths of a mile. The developer has asked for help to attract C0 commerce. Is there an opportunity for government, this government, our government and local institutions of higher education to work with this developer to leave a legacy of one of the nicest office park developments in the Quad Cities? This is not about nice-looking buildings in my view. The objective should be to diversify our commerce base, strengthen our economic sustainability to weather a downturn and provide the city an opportunity to better itself. Respectfully, the leaders of Davenport are charged with the responsibility to set the strategic vision with supporting initiatives and performance metrics. This vision determines how we say, "Welcome to Davenport" for both residents and commerce alike. Residents and commerce pitted against each other in my view as a corrosive agent that eats away at the social fabric of a community. Should "Welcome to Davenport" mean, "Homebuyers beware and prospective commerce be forewarned for a fight?" Or, the one I prefer, "Welcome, we have a long-term plan that protects our residential neighborhoods while being strategic where we promote commerce to coexist harmoniously." So what are reasonable expectations? I would like to share three. A comprehensive zoning plan that is aligned with a long-term strategic plan. Shouldn't these serve to minimize the number of rezoning requests to avoid misimpressions of placing a higher value on commerce than the private interest of homeowners? Further, are we benchmarking with other cities to ensure we have best practices? For example, there are some very positive developments happening beyond our city limits within our own state. Point number two, when a petition is requested, shouldn't the onus be on the petitioner to disclose the specific use requiring the rezone? If not, then is it unreasonable to think that zoning could be viewed as an open checkbook? Can we answer the use question for this petition? It has also been said that each petition has to be evaluated on its merits. Do we have decision criteria framework that could be shared publicly? This would aid in mitigating thoughts about decisions being made capriciously, transactional versus strategic or worse, as we've heard earlier tonight, advantaging one neighborhood over another. My final point is without an assurance to maintain the current zoning boarding our homes, is it unreasonable to expect the majority of homeowners, as you heard mentioned earlier, including myself, would object to the rezoning? We are all responsible for our brand, for how we say, "Welcome to Davenport" and for how we chart our course for the future. Please, you don't know me, take my comments this evening in the spirit of continuous improvement because that's how I intend them. Thank you for listening. I know leaders have a tough job. I know this. And I appreciate your service to the citizens of Davenport. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Is there someone else who would like to speak on this item?
Hello, my name is Stacy Spillam. I am the owner of Pure Hair Studio on 5515 Utica Ridge Road. But I am also the hopeful owner of the building on Lot 1. My husband, Chris Spillam, and I are, I suppose what we would call ourselves a developer of some sort. It's kind of a new term, but it's kind of a neat experience that I've had standing in front of you all and listening to everything that's gone on. But of the three things that are on the agenda over the last couple of weeks, my husband and I are the only local developer, which is very empowering to myself. So we're not only local, but we're going to live in the building that we're proposing on building, on the lot that we're proposing on building on it. So we kind of have a different take on what's happening here. So we will live there. My business will live there. People next to me will be my neighbors as well. And the neighbors surrounding us are 600 feet away from us. That is almost two city blocks away from us. So I know that, I feel extremely confident that not only my business that will be kind of the anchor store of this development, but the two smaller businesses that we hope to have with us are businesses that are hopefully like, or will be like us. And a hair salon is considered okay in the CO. I think that's been brought up. But I may remind you that a quarter of our business is retail. And as a small business owner, if there are shifts someday in my business, I may become 50% retail. I may become 75% retail. A large competitor of ours is Ulta Beauty Supply, which is just around the corner from us. They are 98% retail and 2% service. So for those means, a salon may someday need a C1. I also might merge into selling more retail. As a developer of this land and as someone that is putting their life, their family, all of our money on the line, it would be in our best interest as a developer to seek out C1 for those uses of not only my personal business and my personal business's future, but also to attract the similar businesses next to us, which are also retail businesses such as a clothing boutique. I thank you for your support and your vote that have gotten us to this point today. I am confident that we will hardly have and will have very minimal impact on the neighbors that are 600 feet, nearly two blocks away from our current lot that we are proposing. We need our neighbors to like us. I need to be friendly with them. I need them to be friendly with us and that is our goal with this development is that we all are living in this corner of Davenport together and that we will all, that we all want the same thing for this area of Davenport. So as a small business, we need their support. We need your support. We need our neighbor's support. So that would be our goal and our mission. So I thank you for all that you guys do and thanks for hearing me out tonight.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak on this item?
My name is Lynn Gibson and I am part of the McCarthy-Bush Development and Construction Team located at 5401 Victoria Avenue in Davenport.[1681.71] Team located at 5401 Victoria Avenue in Davenport. I want to speak briefly tonight on where we've been and the merits of our rezoning request. If you recall, our request was originally to rezone 8.4 acres, and that request was modified to rezone only the 1.5 acre site at the corner of Utica Ridge and 56th Street. Through the process of conducting two neighborhood meetings and many individual follow-up conversations, we believed that we had reached a compromise, not only by reducing the acreage in our request to the furthest point from the Crow Valley Villas and homeowners, but also by adding 13 restrictions, which would become part of the formal zoning process. You will note on the second page an X on the current zoning map, showing you the location of that 1.5 acre lot in question. As I mentioned, this is the lot furthest from the Crow Valley Villas. I think it's also important to note that all incoming and outgoing traffic from this building will be on 56th Street to the south, not on Utica Ridge to the west. Much of the concern that you've heard and the objections you've heard are less about the corner and this business as they are about the fear of what might come in five or 10 or 15 years, and we respect that. I can tell you, as Greg Bush told you last week, McCarthy-Bush Corp. is a longtime local builder and developer with a history of quality and a very close connection to this neighborhood. We are pleased and proud to be part of this small business's desire to expand and grow in Davenport, and we feel that the restrictions that we've already committed to will strike a balance between the neighborhood's concerns and will still allow the project to move forward without placing any further limitations on a small, local business's ability to grow in Davenport. We look forward to this moving, this project and this process moving forward. We ask you for your support, and as this area continues to develop, we look forward to a positive working relationship in the future with the neighbors on both sides of Utica Ridge Road. Thank you.
Thank you. Does there anyone else who want to speak on this item?
My name's Jeff West. I live at 4221 East 59th in the Villas. One reason why I thought I would do this, I know a couple of the council members were on staff here when I had the same problem on Fair Avenue of the neighbors upset about the stuff that was going on up there, the apartment complexes, and I know two of them are still here, that it all turned out very well. I mean, the neighbors, all of a sudden, started seeing the plans and it went on. Well, this one, I don't know where, there's 83% of people that don't want this. They never knocked on my door, and I don't know why, and I know my neighbor they never knocked, because I talked to a couple of people. And I just don't understand, I don't know if these people actually know what they're signing or what it is going to be there. I believe half of our neighbors from November till April are gone anyway. I'm still working, so I'll be there, and I'll run my golf cart up to wherever it is and get my hair done or have a glass of wine. I don't understand this. But I do not feel that there is 80% of the people in our Villas that the young lady was saying this. And the signatures, what are they signing? Do they even know what they're signing? Because half of the people are gone in two months, because I live out there. I've been out there all winter long. But I just feel that for the project should be, should pass, I think the people are going to use it more than what they say they're going to use it. Now, they say they're not, but they will. And I just feel that the young lady's trying to start a business up, and a couple people are trying to tear it down. And I'm very opposed to that. I started myself 40 years ago, and it's tough. But I really, and the Bushes, as we've all heard from everybody that works here, they're top of the line. But I will say, Mayor, and the council, this is, I have no idea where these people come up with 80, 83%. I don't believe them figures, because I was not knocked on, and I know my neighbor there, and a couple neighbors across the street were never knocked on. So if they didn't hit me up, I don't understand this. But I appreciate your time. I hope you all vote yes, we need something out there, or let the other 83% buy the property and do with it what they want to. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak on this item? Consider, we've moved the consideration. Is there any alderman who would like to speak on this item? We will, under this circumstance. Come on up.
My name is Jean Wolfe, and I live in the Sixth Ward, and I do want to express my concern about water mitigation issues with this additional development. Currently, there is water, I mean, there are fields in this area that are absorbing water, and so for every foot or so of water that drops in these unusual times environmentally, that area is now absorbing the water, and there aren't any flooding issues or any other problems in terms of water. West of Lake, or west of Utica Ridge, there are water problems, and when the developer initially put those homes in, that water issue did not get resolved, and that was decades ago, and we're still struggling with having our yards be eroded, trees falling into this ravine area, and it happened to be scoured away over time. So my major concern on this issue is the lack of water, or the opportunity for water to just end up in the streets or in residential homes. And the vision, as I understand of this group, is to make sure that we have a good quality of life, and in my perspective, a good quality of life starts with your home. So I would really like to have the city be aware of the water issues that continue to plague us all and seriously consider how that water issue is going to be resolved. And not to be disrespectful to anybody that presented this evening, but when people say they'll take care of those issues, some of us that have, like this other family that lived here for 60 years, we've been here 40 years, and what happens in one year sometimes doesn't last for decades and decades. And so my hope would be that we can look far into the future and address those water issues in a respectful way. Thank you.
Thank you. There's been a motion and a second to move the consideration. Any discussion from any alderman? Alderman Dickman.
Thank you, Your Honor. I know that the comment that we just had was about water runoff and things like that, and that we passed a change to our ordinance for our water management, and so asking staff if we could have our stream management person come and do a presentation about that at a future date to inform residents. That would be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman McGinnis.
Thank you, Your Honor. I've been very quietly listening for the last three weeks, four weeks, as this has come before us. And I go back and forth. I do understand that zoning changes in areas and cities change, but I'm concerned about this, you know, the use that the developer and I, you know, recognize her ambition and her goals, and I appreciate, and I applaud that, but her use could actually fit into the zoning that's there now. It's the desire for a different kind of usage in other parts of the development that is pushing this rezoning. And I'm troubled by this. This feels to me like spot zoning, because there is no understanding of what will happen with the rest of this land. Reminds me of another case that was before us a few months ago, where part of a, you know, part of a parcel had been developed, and it was, well, let's do this one piece more. It was a kind of a reverse situation, but it would have changed dramatically what was happening in the neighborhood, that neighborhood, because of exits and entrances. And so I'm, I am grown very concerned about this proposal, and it's difficult for me to support it, given that it really feels to me like spot zoning. And without knowing what else is going to happen to this property, knowing that the owner, at least one of the owners of part of this land has said they might come forward with more rezoning requests, it makes me even more uncomfortable. You know, if before us was, here's the plan for all of this area, and part of it was C1, I might feel differently, but I don't know that, and my disease is making me extremely uncomfortable with what's before us.
Thank you, Alderman McGinnis. Alderman Clul.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, you've got to appreciate the Sixth Ward. I mean, just the articulate nature of the way these people have expressed their concerns makes me proud to be a resident of Sixth Ward. What a great group of people. We've had conversations now for some time, and I, you know, one thing about this particular motion is the networking that has gone on, working with neighbors in the area to try to come to some situation where although everybody may not like everything about what is being proposed, they found something that they could go along with. Having been a part of those neighborhood meetings, I did see cooperation between residents and the developer and the builder, and some number of conditions were made, and I thought that that was a fair effort on their part to try to meet the concerns of the residents. You know, again, water issues, I just want to reflect on that. There are some legacy issues there, and I will talk to staff, and we will have them take a look at that situation out there, what's existing. I have heard some things about it, but I would like staff to go out and determine exactly what's going on, what can be done, how to rectify that situation. Again, as Alderman Dickman mentioned, our water management plan in place now for the last two months, I think, is way above standards, expectations. I think it's going to do well for Davenport. It certainly makes a restriction on developers, but I think appropriately so. As somebody mentioned, you know, this issue of zoning, this is Lot 1, this is a much smaller area than was initially proposed for development, and I do believe it's appropriate because our comprehensive plan indicates this is residential general, and as part of residential general, commercial is allowed for as it is on the edge of a commercial thoroughfare. So I believe that there is every reason why this is appropriate with our current zoning code. You know, the one thing that did come up tonight that has made me think about things is, is again, the word was used, reasonable expectations, of what people should be able to expect when they buy a home, and they expect the city to have the foresight to be able to lay out what's going to happen in their neighborhood in the next 10, 20, 30 years. And I, that's an honest, and that's certainly a viable consideration. Times do change. We have a planning and zoning board, and their responsibility is to make those adjustments. You know, we have Supreme Court justices who are literalists, and we have those who make adjustments with the times, and I think our planning and zoning board is that organization that's responsible for making sure that we honor the fact that over time, things do change. Now, if we were to do that flippantly and make decisions on the whim that a developer says, "I would like to have this," and we just say, "Well, whatever," that's wrong. There have to be sound reasons on the basis of which we make these decisions. But I think planning and zoning has, and their conditions, the issues that have come forward with the neighborhood that the developer has accepted, makes sense, and I think it's the way that things are supposed to work. This, to me, is not spot zoning. It may appear to be. I don't believe that it is. Again, I think this is the way that the council, that planning and zoning are able to work with the neighbors and come to a solution, again, which while it may not be the absolutely perfect decision for anybody, is the best for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Clul. Alderman Mattson.
Thank you, Your Honor. As I said, not last week, the week before, if this wasn't CO, if it was R, that'd be a different discussion, but CO to C1 seems okay. I appreciate the compromise and restrictions. Very, very few times on my over decade of being in the council do we have someone, a developer or a builder, that will come and actually encourage and put restrictions on what can't go there. That's encouraging. And the other thing, for people who follow different things, the state of Iowa recognized Davenport just a year ago as the small business community of the year in the entire state. Most people understand that small businesses are the thing that gets jobs and commerce going, and that's what we talk about a lot here. The things that get attention are the big boxes and the big events that happen, Costco, Sterilite, Kraft Heinz, but the engine that drives everything is the small business now. And then McCarthy-Bush and the developers have done a lot of work around here and do good work, and work with folks, and try and come up with some compromises. So I'll support it, and I know Alderman Clul going forward, and all of us look forward and challenge the staff to work with neighbors, and when concerns come and as things work and develop and grow and go, we take those things serious. And as Alderman Dickman said, with the water, we, my time in the council, we've put a couple changes into the water, and it's a pretty serious one now, so they have to adhere to that. And I know they know that because they've done other projects. So I'll support it for a small business, and then neighbors, as you continue and as this continues to happen, please continue to come to us, and we will challenge our staff to make sure that issues that you bring forward do get addressed. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Mattson. Alderman Grip.
Thank you, Your Honor, and I do want to reiterate some comments that have been made by my colleagues already, that I do appreciate the thoughtful dialogue from the neighborhood, and you've certainly given us a lot to consider. Two things I want to discuss. The first is, I know some folks are kind of looking for a more concrete, what are the terms that you judge rezoning based upon? And in its simplest form, are the uses suitable given the surrounding zoning and site criteria? So is the use of the land suitable given the zoning that is around it? And that's very general. And then I just was jotting down a list of things that I consider, or we might consider, the character of the neighborhood surrounding it, the suitability of the use of the property, the detrimental effects of the use, the beneficial effects of the use, the duration that the property has been vacant, conformance to the comprehensive plan, which we do have, the impact on the infrastructure that exists, the neighborhood's support or lack of support, and of course, the professional staff, opinion of our staff. And those are just the things that I jotted down there. But you might note that some of those things are very subjective. So some of you folks might think that a coffee shop down the street is not something that you would want in your neighborhood, while others in the same neighborhood would say, "That's exactly what I want in my neighborhood." And so we're forced to take up these issues on a fairly regular basis and try to look at them as subjectively as possible and make decisions. And when I ask the question, is this use of this parcel, is it suitable for the surrounding area, I come to the conclusion that it is, and I'm going to support it. The second thing was the spot zoning. This is a conversation I've had with Director Berger about, is it spot zoning? And, you know, I think if you look at the amount of CO and C2 that you have surrounding, I don't think that it qualifies. There's also some other criteria that you have to meet to call it spot zoning. I don't think it is, and so I'll continue to support. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no one, will the clerk call the roll for the second consideration of this ordinance?
McGinnis.
No.
Clul.
Yes.
Tompkins.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Ambrose.
Yes.
Condon.
Yes.
Dickman.
Yes.
Mattson.
Yes.
Grip.
Yes.
Eight yeses, Your Honor, one no.
Thank you. The ordinance will move to a third consideration. We're going to do item number four, and then we're going to take a little break after number four. So first of all, a first consideration for ordinance amending the boundaries and exemption schedules of central city and north urban revitalization areas. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak on this topic?
Move the consideration.
We've had the, the first consideration has been moved. Is there any discussion by any of the aldermen? Second, first? A second, thank you. Any discussion from any of the aldermen? Alderman Mattson.
I just want to say thanks to my colleagues and staff, and as we continue to look at, I've said a couple of times, been on council a long time, and we talk about revitalization or other things and tools. We're actually doing stuff, not that we haven't done these type of things before, but we're looking at areas on how to do that. I've had some good conversations with staff about a couple little concerns, but they've educated me on those, and so you're going to see probably continuous movement for us to come up with some tools to revitalize and do different things to encourage people to go. So I just want to say thanks to everybody doing that.
Thank you. Anybody else in the council? Seeing no one, will the clerk, Jackie, would you call the roll for first consideration of this ordinance?
Clul.
Yes.
Tompkins.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Ambrose.
Yes.
Condon.
Yes.
Dickman.
Yes.
Mattson.
Yes.
Grip.
Yes.
McGinnis. McGinnis.
Yes.
Nine eyes, Your Honor.
Thank you. This ordinance will move to a second consideration. At this time, we're going to take a 10-minute break. It's 7:40. We'll reconvene at 7:50. Thank you all very much and we will continue. Can let Alderman Klul get to his chair on the dais. Our next item is number five on our agenda this evening. It's a first consideration for ordinance case number REZ18-10, request to rezone 24.27 acres, more or less, of property located south of East 53rd Street, immediately west of Bettendorf City border, from an R2 PUD, low-density residential district planned unit development, and PDD planned development district to R5M PUD, medium-density dwelling district planned unit development. Jessica Tuttle Thompson, Thrift Development Company, is the petitioner. Is there any public with business on this item? Please, sir. Name and your address, please.
My name is Jimmy Clifford. I live at 4530 East 49th Court. I was not able to attend last week. My wife was here and presented my letter. I think during the discussion period, there were some questions raised about the accuracy of my letter regarding the demonstration of Watermark's history. You each have a copy of the letter again today with the exhibit that's on it. The exhibit clearly states information that was obtained from Watermark's own website. Watermark has sold 16 of their properties. They still had 10 listed as being leased. In the last week and a half, I think they've added two more, so there's an update to that. But they sold units in seven different states, not just one, as it might have been implied. They sold everything they built before 2015, including three units built after 2015. So they're really not in the business of maintaining and running property for long term. They're building and divesting. And that's a business, that's fine, but if they're making promises about long-term development, how the building can be maintained, then I don't think that's quite accurate. So, but the real question at hand, I think, is the need and justification to change the zoning on the partial. It's not distressed property. It's actually very well-maintained. It's not consuming city resources, services, or investments. It's not preventing development of adjacent properties or thoroughfares. Why is the duration of non-development a concern? And what is the strategic need to change the planned use of this property? Again, why are we, what problem are we trying to fix here? If increased tax revenues is the justification for changing the zoning, maybe we should just eliminate the R2 classification, encourage all development to be a higher taxable contribution. I don't support this belief and I trust that you don't either. So please do not approve this zoning request.
Thank you, sir. Does anyone else to like to speak on this item?
Hello, I'm Brian Burnson, 5136 Hamilton Court in Davenport. So I am, my residence faces east and would face the property of Sophie's, the proposed I guess I'd like to start out, there's a lot of issues. I've been, we've been living in our property for almost 20 years. When we moved in, 99. And over the time since we first moved in, we've had real traffic issues on 53rd because we go out Amesbury Drive, all right? We've had real issues now with accidents on Utica and 53rd all along. For us to get out onto 53rd now takes about 10 minutes, on average, to be able to get out and make a left-hand turn will take you 10 minutes. To make a right-hand turn, maybe five, because of the traffic load, all right? Huge traffic load. The proposed property, the way it's set up, that property sits, I would say about eight to 10 feet above grade of the neighbors that back up to that property. So they're proposing a two-story apartment building to go in there. That's going to be, we're going to be looking at the second floor. Those buildings, the second floor of those apartment buildings are going to be, we're going to be able to see them, all right? A six-foot vinyl fence isn't going to do much for, you know, a 20-foot variance. So the grade of my house to the grade of where the apartments are going to be is that, and then you add a two-story on the top of that, they're going to be able to see in my second floor of my, of my house, okay? There's going to be huge issues with water runoff. There's going to be big issues with, with light noise. So they're talking, they're proposing 300 units. So on average, figure two cars per unit. You're talking 600 cars, all right? And then they're proposing commercial property up in front with the only ingress and egress in and out of that property is off 53rd with no turn lanes. How is that going to work? You're going to have people trying to get in and out of their place and the 53rd's going to be backed up. People ain't going to be able to get in and out. What's that going to do to us? You know? What's that going to do to us? So there's some huge issues there. Bettendorf has voiced the same concerns. The people that are on the south end of that property, they're going to be, they're going to be engulfed by these apartment buildings. A six-foot fence isn't going to do anything. You know, if you want to do something, you know, put up a 20-foot concrete wall. You're going to, they're also proposing in their, in their plans to have, have these big water retention ponds. Oh, I'm originally from Minnesota, so what happens with water retention ponds? Mosquitoes, bugs. They're going to be magnets for all that stuff. I want to expound on one other thing. And the last gentleman that spoke about, about Watermark and their properties and how I'm a retired federal agent, all right? I was an IRS special agent here for 22 years, worked out of the Quad Cities, okay? I worked with Chief Sikorsky, Officer Smalls, the whole guys, all of them. Worked drug cases, organized crime cases, political corruption cases. So what happens when you have properties, apartments, that the base rent is 15 or 1600 bucks a month, up to almost $3,000 a month for their three-bedroom or two-bedroom or whatever? It's up to mid, mid 2,500, 2,500, 2,600 bucks a month. Who in their right mind is going to rent an apartment, okay, for that kind of money? Who is going to rent an apartment for that when you can go out and buy a house and have a house payment that's half of that, okay? So they're selling, they'll build them and they're selling. They're selling their properties. And of course, my issue is, one, we've got enough apartment buildings going up all over Bettendorf and Davenport now. We had some other meetings and I did some research and there was over 400 vacant apartments. So what, why do we need more apartments here? I think our first, the first reorganization or the first rezoning was good. Had a small piece of commercial up front, one building, townhomes and then single-family residents behind that.
Could you wrap up, please?
Yes.
Thank you.
So my point is, what's going to happen with these when they can't fill them? Then they're going to get government subsidized rent. And then that means crime. That means increased crime. Trust me, I've been down that road before, all right? So I vehemently oppose this rezoning. I think the prior rezoning was bearable. I mean, we worked with rezoning and city council for years on that and we came to a decent resolution that I think people could live with.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you very much. Anyone else that'd like to speak on this item?
Hello, my name's Elizabeth Hughes and I live at 5143 Hamilton Court. I would like to speak to the council in opposition to the proposed rezoning of the property currently owned by Ms. Sophie Foster. I have lived in the court for nearly all of my life, moving here when I was just two years old. I feel my childhood here in this court in the city of Davenport is unique to everyone else I know. I know all of my neighbors. I've played with their children when I was a child. I've been scolded and supervised by the adults. What we have in the court is special. We know each other. We really know each other as close friends and families. We laugh and cry and celebrate and mourn together. I've been to baptisms, first convenions, confirmations and bat mitzvahs, weddings, birthday and graduation parties, and retirement celebrations for our neighbors and their families. We have had Labor Day parties at the neighbor's pool and my dad made trophies for the cannonball contest. At Halloween, we have a neighborhood potluck. Everyone brings candy to one place and we sit around a fire pit and visit with each other and with the kids and parents who come up our street. The married daughter of my neighbor comes home every year for the party. When my grandpa passed away in June, three carloads of our neighbors and friends drove the one and a half hours to Dyersville for the visitation. Our backyard, which borders the commercial development, has been the site of countless celebrations, neighborhood gatherings, an autumn party for the German students, me and my brother's birthday parties, and our nine years of BICS parties that have united four generations of my family. Our neighborhood is the kind of neighborhood that makes the city great, comprised of good, hard-working people who care about each other and their property. Davenport should be proud of this neighborhood. I'm only 19, but I've spent six months in Australia, several weeks in India, and have traveled to or worked in Maine and various parts of the United States. I have friends from all over the globe and not a single one of them lives in or grew up in a neighborhood that I did. I just got back on Sunday from a summer camp in Maine and I cannot tell you how happy I was to be home. I'm greatly saddened by the prospect of everything I had growing up disappearing. With 300 apartment units and several commercial buildings in our backyard, no matter how nice any of the buildings are, we will be less secure. There will be more traffic on 53rd, more noise, and many more people coming and going behind our house, behind all of our houses, every single day. Everyday summer activities such as walking to McDonald's or Quick Star for an ice cream will be more difficult. I'm young, but I'm not naive. We knew for many years that the front part of the property was going to be developed for commercial purposes. It is our hope that this will be done with respect for the neighborhood it serves. However, seven years ago, my parents and all of my neighbors fought to find a compromise that would maintain the neighborhood feel to our part of the city. Single-family homes was the agreement, not multiple apartment buildings with 300 units. I'm very disappointed that the owner of the property has been so unneighborly and antagonistic and is unwilling to negotiate with home builders that could fulfill the letter of the previous rezoning to build in addition to our already great neighborhood, in addition that would join us to our Bettendorf neighborhoods to the east. I do not think luxury apartments are the right answer. It does not fit the neighborhood. I feel I speak for all of my neighbors. We want to maintain the safe, family-centered environment that we have always had, the kind of neighborhood that the city of Davenport needs more of, not less. Please don't let our neighborhood go to the way, go the way of so many that have been devalued in the name of progress. This zoning will bring in more tax revenue for sure, but it will cost the city a great neighborhood on which no value can be placed. You are in a position to support strong neighborhoods and vote no to this rezoning proposal. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Anyone else like to speak on this item?
Good evening. I'm Rusty Hunter-Zuber, a resident of the Sixth Board. And when I retired two and a half years ago, my aspirations were not to stand in front of the city council, as I seem to have fallen into a trap lately. But what I'm observing and what I want to talk to you right now is about a trend that I have observed in the last two months that I've had the opportunity to engage with you. And the trend seems to be that the city leadership will support a developer on simply a statement of economic hardship. And let me give you the four instances or observations, and obviously, these are my perceptions based on these observations. If we go back and we look back to the recently passed Elmore Corners overlay district, there was quite a discussion at the third consideration about whether that would be extended south of 59th on down into existing area. At that time, the city council decision was, we will not extend that overlay district because it would impose an economic hardship on the developer. And then we just finished the third consideration tonight of the WC Torsia proposal. And one of the debates was, why can't this be done in the area off of Elmore? And the answer was, oh, it is not economically feasible because the land cost is too high or whatever. And that was accepted and there has been no proof of that, at least that I've had visible to me. We just recently talked about the McCarthy-Bush request to go from C0 to C1. And a fundamental common point there is that it is not economically feasible to develop that as C0. So we're entertaining and moving ahead with the rezoning to make it economically feasible for the developer. And here we are at instance number four. It was rezoned seven years ago. It has not developed. And we're saying, oh, the developer is calling economic hardship because the land is too expensive, it will never be developed as low-density housing. We need to make a change. So I just want to give you an observer's view of what I'm seeing as a trend. Hopefully, I'm wrong, but it sure doesn't look like it from my seat. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else from the public want to speak on this item? Is the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye on that moving to consideration. We're going to go, not the whole thing, I know. Any discussion from the aldermen? Alderman McGinnis.
Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor. I did have a question and a thank you to staff. They had, I'm trying to switch between screens here, so I apologize. There had, I had asked last week and it was presented, and this is really the front section of this parcel, the uses on the edges of the parcel where it's, you know, the proposed, you know, the proposed use in the commercial area, it seems to be coming pretty close to residential there. And I don't know if there's anyone from the commercial builder here tonight to talk about options. I looked at the map. I had a little bit of a hard time understanding what could go in those areas that border on east and west of the proposed development. Can someone speak to that?
Matt Flynn, Community Planning and Economic Development. Yeah, you're referring to the next zoning, the build-to-suit, but...
Correct.
That is a planned development, so there is a land use plan that is included as part of that. And it stipulates the uses and the size of the approximately eight to 10 parcels on that site. Particular interest was on the west side. There are two parcels, one immediately adjacent to 53rd Street. That has a one-story limitation. I believe that's 6,500 square foot building, maximum size, does allow some limited retail, commercial, and other uses, restaurants and entertainment. Now, the lot in the far southwest corner, again, is limited to one story. I believe that's 6,500 square feet again, and that building pad is limited to offices and medical clinics. Along both sides, there's a 30, minimum 35-foot setback, which exceeds the ordinance minimum.
So my question would be, the professional clinic seems a use that would be used during the day and people would not be there at night. And you can't answer this question, but, but A, which is near the road, would be, could be a drive-through restaurant that could be up until 2:00 in the morning. So I guess my question to the developer who I don't think is here is, why can't A, all... So I guess my question to the developer who I don't think is here is, why can't A also be that softer use rather than the one that allows, would allow for use, possibly day and night, you know, who knows? So that's my question. You probably can't answer that tonight, Matt.
Thank you. Alderman Mattson.
Thank you, Mayor. So last week, I guess I'll ask, is there anybody from the developer company, People, Landmark, or whatever they are, Thompson Thrift Development here? You don't think, okay, fair enough. So I'll ask staff to please have them here when we're meeting about them, because there's questions. For example, last week, it's, we specifically asked about onsite, and they explained that, and then asked about their turnover, and they said just a few properties in Colorado. It was brought to our attention today that that seems to be different. So I would like either them to explain if on their website, and since 2015, they've basically turned over all their properties, or there's eight states' worth of turnover, the difference between that and just Colorado. So I have that out publicly. I'd like to know that if that's the case. If it's not, somebody please explain the difference of why we're hearing what I would consider very significant differences of ownership. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Mattson. Alderman Kuhl.
Thank you, Mayor. I heard that comment last week, too, from the developer. I talked to Mary afterwards, and she gave me some information, and I appreciate that. I shared that with staff, and I wonder if, at this point, Director Berger, you'd mind coming up and telling me some of the things that you found in regards to that particular piece of information.
Bruce Berger, you're Community Planning and Economic Development Director. I don't have all the detail from it, but in general, I think some of the confusion I heard from, I think, at least one of the speakers and Alderman Kuhl, was that the developer said that they hadn't sold any since 2008, I believe. I believe what she tried to say, at least I talked with her a little bit afterwards and researched along with, I think, the neighbors' research, they really haven't built anything. That's when the company started. So I think what she maybe misspoke, or what maybe people misheard, was that they hadn't sold anything since 2008, rather, they started the company in 2008, they had their first unit in production, occupiable in 2011, and so I think their first property sold was 2012. The only other piece that I shared a little bit with Alderman Kuhl, I did get some further information back as a result of some of the confusion last week, and the developer, some of that information, I think I shared with you all. They indicated they have switched to a business model where they're not selling their properties they're holding, but it does indicate that at least through 2017, they have sold a couple of properties a year. So, you know, that may be something, as I think Alderman Mattson, you asked, that'd be something we could have them directly answer a little bit for. It seems like maybe they've scaled back a bit, but, and they haven't sold any in 2018, but they have continued to sell, you know, up until 2017, at least a couple of properties. So we'll check with the developer and get back.
Yeah, I appreciate that clarification, and I would like the developer to address that when she's here next time. I think that it's reasonable to think that 2008, you began an operation, 2008, you don't sell something in 2011, you need liquidity, so it would be natural to reinvest that fund back into your company. It seems to me, like from what I heard from Director Berger, is that in fact, this is something that is commonly done with companies. And I guess the question comes about is, is it bad if they did sell this development to somebody else? Is that necessarily bad? And as I peruse that thought, I don't think it's the case that necessarily you step down if a developer develops and then sells to somebody else. The quality that I'm seeing in the building of these buildings is high. I think the three-bedroom units are going for 1,800, as I recall. It's a gated community. I have very high expectations for this place, and in no way, shape, or form would I ever see it going Section 8. It just is not the kind of facility that would happen there. And the last thing that I'll mention is the confidence that people have in building in Davenport. I think this is a $38 million development. Just the fact that we have people who are looking at Davenport and saying, this is the place that I want to build. Granted, they have a profit motive behind everything, I understand that, but the confidence that they have, they're not going to build something that's going to lose money, I'm confident of that. So I think that this is another level of confidence that people have in Davenport, and I believe that although I don't have many friends that are going to be paying $1,800 a month for an apartment, I believe that these people have checked this, they've vetted it, and I'm hopeful that, and hopeful, and I'm quite confident that this development is going to be a good thing for Davenport. The issue of being with neighbors, are you gonna see this building? Yeah, you're gonna see it. I think that that is something that happens with development. I see houses next door to me, they see in my windows, I understand that it hasn't been that case for some time, but this comes with development. So again, as I said before, everything is not black and white. This dance between commercial development and making sure that residential properties are honored is rather complex, and there's a lot of things that go into it. But certainly, there is going to be an impact to neighbors. It's going to be different, and not always better, I grant you that. But I think, again, for all of us in Davenport and Sixth Ward, this is a good venture on behalf of the developer, and I will, again, continue to work with residents to make sure that that residential aspect of this dance is well taken care of. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Kuhl. Alderman McGinnis.
Thank you, Your Honor, for letting me have another go at this, and I'll try to keep it short. I had, I did have, you know, some questions. I know that property very well, I've been on it actually quite a bit, and I, questions about, you know, we've had a lot of discussion in other locations about water runoff and water retention. I want to make sure that staff is, feels that the plans, the water retention plans are robust and appropriate. If the, if a six-foot-high fence is enough noise barrier, this is a very large number of people. Actually, the land use is probably a good one because we are able to have a lot of people in a smaller area, so it's a compact use of land, but I worry about if that is enough of a barrier and if that's enough height behind this, and I'd like to hear more about that. And the other question I have is, this is a lot of people, and is there a plan for a light? And if there is gonna need to be a light, because it looks like there's one exit out of there, which, you know, I believe it's what it's saying, which is fine, who's paying for that light? Would this be something the developer would pay for? Because that is, that's gonna be a lot of folks, and that's gonna be a lot of traffic as well. So I'd like some feedback about that, please.
Thank you, Alderman McGinnis. Alderman Mattson.
Thanks again, Mayor, for the second. A little bit to Alderman Kuhl. It's just to make sure that we're getting the correct information. Your point about, is it bad or good if someone, so I don't know, but it is fair to ask truthful answers and have the full understanding of what's gonna go on. I agree, it looks like a nice development, but as one of two who were here when we had the many discussions about this a few years ago, we did, without saying the word too much, promise in a verbal kind of discussion that we would, you know, we would look out for what goes here, and in the short period of time, now we're changing that. So at least from my perspective, I feel I have, at least we owe them straight of what's going on and what's different. So again, I'll just say that, what's being told to us needs to be straight up, and then we can have the fact, and we can decide what to do. But if there's differences, we need to know that, and thank you, Mr. Berger, for your following up with, and giving us some, a little bit of understanding. But I'm not happy with, at least, the understanding of what's going on right now. Thank you.
Alderman Dickman.
Thank you, Your Honor. I had a question about, since it is gonna be a gated community, will the roads and sidewalks then be private property of the developer? The staff could get that information to us before we make the final vote. And then also, estimates, I guess if it's going to be public road and public sidewalk, if the tax base will generate enough revenue for the second life cycle of the infrastructure, as I know Alderman Grip has discussed frequently with development. If you could get us some more details about that before the next vote, I would appreciate it. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Alderman Dickman, and I guess I would turn to Brandon and the rest of the staff. We've heard a number of things, you guys got all those on the list, and I know we'll be, have an opportunity at the next committee, the whole meeting, to discuss some of those in more detail, so thank you. No other, Alderman, at this point, will the clerk call the roll for the First Consideration of the Ordinance?
Tompkins.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Ambrose.
Yes.
Condon.
Yes.
Dickman.
Yes.
Mattson.
Yes.
Grip.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Kuhl.
Yes.
Nine yeses, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. Item number six on our agenda is the First Consideration, Ordinance for Case Number REZ-18-11, Request to Rezone 13.65 acres, more or less, of property located south of East 53rd Street, west of the Bentendorf City border, from R2 PUD Low Density Residential District Planned Unit Development and PDD Plan Development District to all PDD with a new land use plan. Kevin Culner, Build to Suit, is the petitioner. Is there any public with comments on this item? It's been moved, does any alderman have any questions? Seeing none? Is there a second, first of all? I'm sorry. Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Jackie, would you please call the roll?
Dunn.
Yes.
Ambrose.
Yes.
Condon.
Yes.
Dickman.
Yes.
Mattson.
Yes.
Grip.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Kuhl.
Yes.
Tompkins.
Yes.
Nine yeses, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. Our next item, number seven, is a resolution approving case number FDP-18-03, being the request of William Torsia on behalf of WCT Investments, Davenport Series LLC for a PDD Plan Development District, Final Development Plan on property located on the south side of East 53rd Street, approximately 385 feet east of Lorton Avenue. Is there any public with comments on this item? It's been moved, it's moved and seconded. Any discussion from any alderman on this item? Seeing none? Jackie, would you call the roll?
Ambrose.
Yes.
Condon.
Yes.
Dickman.
Yes.
Mattson.
Yes.
Grip.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Kuhl.
Yes.
Tompkins.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Nine yeses, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. Our next item, item number eight, is a resolution approving a fiber-to-the-premise development agreement between the city of Davenport and Metro FiberNet for the construction of a community-wide fiber network offering cable, phone, and internet services. Is there any from, anyone from the public who want to speak on this?
Good evening again, Rusty Entersuber, resident of the Sixth Ward. I did have the opportunity and ask a few questions at the joint council meeting, I thank you for that opportunity. What I'm here to say is, the lack of response to those questions has continued to solidify my assessment that we need to manage our expectations about what is going to happen after the build-out. My assessment is, unfortunately, that despite what we may think, the MetroNet is really just going to be another provider, an average provider of phone, media, and internet services. And let me give you some examples. I specifically asked, and more than one person asked about rates, we were told, go to the website. When you go to the website, you only see teaser rates, and if you go further, you can't see your detail rates or the meaning of the asterisk because the service isn't available at these addresses. So I have no understanding of what rates will be, and I would like to know what the three-year history of their rates are. You can't see that. I specifically asked questions about availability and reliability of the service. Do they have any data about frequency of outages, duration of outages, and how they detect them? You can't find any of that on the website. So I thought, okay, let me try the terms and conditions for a residential user. And I started reading through them, and it's obvious that the attorneys were heavily engaged in that activity. And I got to Section 6, called Limitation of Liability and Indemnification. Quite a one-sided section in the terms and conditions. There's such words as, let's see, I'm sorry, such words as, no obligation to provide the service, users risk, user uses the service at the risk, outages can be expected and are just going to have to happen. So it essentially absolves them of any warranty or guarantee. And I went on a little further, and I looked at the specific section about the internet service, and in Section 5B, it clearly states that when they say speeds of such and such, they are only advertising up to speeds, and there is no guarantee that they will deliver those speeds. And then in the next section, they clearly state, if they deem that someone is uploading or downloading excessive data, they don't define excessive, they can limit that. So very much a one-sided. The other area, and this was discussed Monday night a week ago, they have this clause in your agreements about unreasonably high build-out costs. And I really would like to hear history about what has been their experience with build-out rates for their last three projects, because I see that as quite a bit of wiggle room when they have to start burying cable in areas that they thought they could use poles. So I'm seeing things like that. Now, on the other hand, I'm going to say, I feel this agreement needs to move ahead, maybe we need to have a little more discussion and a little more information, but I invite the competition to market, that will potentially help everyone come to a higher level of service. But I just think we need to go into this with our eyes wide open, realizing that MetroNet is not the panacea or nirvana for these services. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public want to talk on this item?
Thank you, Your Honor. Bernard Ducek with I'm On Communications, based out of Cedar Rapids, serving Iowa City, Hiawatha, Marion, Waterloo, Cedar Falls, Dubuque, Iowa City, several areas in the state of Iowa. We are locally owned and operated. First of all, I'd like to compliment the city. I was just impressed by the passion of the people and how articulate all the citizens were, so very, my first time to a Davenport City Council meeting, so. So on this topic, I understand the desire 100%, that's what all cities in Iowa are looking to do, and as a fellow competitor to MetroNet, we encourage the competition. To be a truly healthy broadband city, you need multiple vendors, not just two or three, but five, six, seven. That's made up of large companies, all the way down to small, local companies, such as myself. I was very glad to hear you're very supportive of small business in Davenport. We consider ourselves a small business with 100 employees, again, all in Iowa. The part we disagree with is the term of that has to be, in order to get this term, you have to be able to build out the entire Bentendorf-Davenport in three years, which is a very tall order for a small company, anybody but a large company, to complete. So that creates a very unlevel playing field for anybody except a major company, such as a MetroNet. There are already competitors here, and if that was opened up to all people who may not be able to meet the three years, but could agree to a five or seven, that would encourage additional competition in, above just one new provider coming in. So I would ask that that be looked at, to allow that to happen. As an example, my company have built an eastern Iowa ring that goes through the Quad Cities. We will be finishing that up here in a few weeks. Our plan was to put development into Davenport without any additional tax incentive, like you're giving MetroNet, but now we will be reconsidering our plans because we'll be on too unlevel a playing field for us to compete with. game for us. So, we will go to other communities in Iowa because of this agreement. Again, this is not against MetroNet. I totally get where you're coming from, and you want additional vendors, but the way this is set up actually discourages competition from anybody but a large, very large vendor that has a lot of financial backing. As a 115-person company, we just can't build out at that pace. Happy to invest in Davenport, as people said, we'd love to invest in Davenport and Benton Dorf. At that pace, at that unlevel playing field, we won't be able to. So, and my final point, I think the rush to solve this problem, you're missing a great opportunity to leverage some of the things you're doing for MetroNet, but to open it up to all providers, many of them already here in this community in the state of Iowa. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public want to speak on this item? Is there a motion to for a second? Any council discussion on this item? Alderman Mattson?
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Wright, so, explain the cost to us. Does it cost us?
Yeah, so, the terms of the development agreement, there is a rebate of the taxes that they pay, that MetroNet will be paying, but specifically related to the infrastructure that's in the ground. Sorry, this mic is not doing so well.
I hear you.
Related to the infrastructure that's in the ground. So, this isn't the property tax that they would be paying for any retail service building they have, or things like that. We're just talking about the fiber in the ground. It's assessed a property tax per Iowa law, and it was a rebate of the city's portion of that, that the city of Davenport receives specifically. We would rebate that to the company. It's a value debt. It's capped at, I'm sorry, $11.675 million over a 20-year period.
And explain the benefit?
And the benefit, then, is that, in kind of getting to the point of maybe some of the people who address this, really, we are looking for a community-wide provider, so one that will provide in all areas of the city, and not just developing in areas where it might be, might be able to get better take rates, or higher costs, or things like that, but really, community-wide for all of our neighborhoods throughout the city. So, the idea being that, as a community-wide provider, all citizens in the city of Davenport would have access to the, those high Internet broadband speeds. It would be available to them on equal terms throughout the city.
Roger. So, thank you. So, Mr. Warner, if you could help me, we went through this a couple of years ago, and we couldn't come to an agreement because of a couple of things that I remember, the cost to us, and the, I guess, the terms of liability, et cetera. Explain why this is different, if you can, I hope.
Yeah. What we were looking at before is actually a municipally-owned
Right.
fiber network.
Right.
So, in essence, we were going to build a roadway
Yep.
and let Internet service providers use that roadway to provide services. And that was going to be, at the time, about $90 million.
Right.
So, we were going to put at risk $90 million of taxpayer money. Under this system, if they don't put anything in the ground, and don't pay any taxes, then they don't get a rebate. So...
And the liability amount is significantly, there basically is none.
Correct. It's a private company doing private business.
But we're trying to offer a service to everyone, and it's their choice if they want to use it.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Mattson. Alderman Grip?
Thank you, and that, my comments follow pretty nicely with Alderman Mattson. So, this proposition came to us a couple of years ago, and it was a high-risk proposition, where the deal was very much based on a specific take rate, and if the company who did the build-out didn't get the take rate, essentially, the city was going to be on the hook for making up the difference, or potentially even taking over the entire system. So, we voted that down, and our staff, knowing that bringing fiber to the home and building out this infrastructure is important to the council, they went back, and they've continued to work on this. And I very much favor the new proposal that has been brought back to us, because a lot of that risk, the vast majority of that risk, has been taken away for the taxpayer, and it also develops the entire, the entire network. So, the gentleman who spoke about the small business, this being a difficult ask for them, while I certainly appreciate that, what we have been seeing is that the small companies come in, they service our best neighborhoods, and they leave our core neighborhoods alone. And that's not what we want to see. We want folks moving back into our core neighborhoods. We want them to have the same technology opportunities as our good neighborhoods with the, good neighborhoods with the high take rates, as, that's what I meant. So, if that came out wrong. And that's what we're getting with this proposition. And then also, on top of that, Benton Dorf, they fit nicely with us as a package deal, and they have their own issues with getting some of their neighborhoods built out. So, it's a win-win for both communities. Thanks.
Thank you, Alderman Grip. Alderman Ambrose?
Thank you, Your Honor. First off, I want to thank all the great Internet partners we've had over the years in our community, and, you know, some of them are pushing 30 years of supply and service, and there's many of them. You know, I'm a little concerned about why we move forward with this concept where we're giving them assistance. But the more and more I hear about the economic impact of this, especially to the business community, you know, it's, it's just another great tool to keep our great city, America's greatest city. So, I'll support that, and, but, you know, we got to thank all those great businesses that have been a great part of our community and still support them as this moves forward. And there are concerns with how this negotiation went, but I can say, it's been way farther than two years that we've been discussing this with different contractors over the years, and I think our staff has gotten fairly proficient in negotiating, particularly this line. Thanks.
Thank you, Alderman Ambrose. Alderman Kuhl?
Thank you, Mayor. Not specifically a sixth ward issue, but I have a chance to talk on something that isn't directly related to my ward. I just, I appreciated the thoughts on a level playing field. I'm going to follow up with staff and talk about that this week. I need some things clarified for myself on that. The one, the one issue that I have a problem with, I brought it up on Monday, is supplying houses primarily with overhead lines. You know, frankly, there's a certain amount of real estate on each of our poles out there, and there's, there's distance issues between electric and others. We've got other providers on those poles. I'm, I'm not happy with doing that above ground. I would certainly, I would at least want to venture to any particular vendor, you know, what the difference in price would be. Is that a financial issue? I couldn't really get a straight answer from the provider on Monday about whether that was a financial decision or not, but I'm unhappy with the clutter that this represents to our neighborhoods if we can do it in an alternative manner.
Thank you. Alderman Tompkins?
Thank you, Mayor. I just also wanted to share, to thank Alderman Ambrose for bringing up that, yes, we do have great service providers who have been with us for quite a while, and we do appreciate that. But the piece with this is that it's just another option. People don't have to have it, or don't have to sign up for it. Some people may choose not to, and that's, it depends on what everybody's needs are. So, but it is just another option. We're not saying it's better or worse. It's just another choice that you have, and I think that's important, and we'd like to see more choices available in lots of aspects of Davenport. So, I think that this is a good opportunity. This is my fifth year, and it's been a conversation since I think started, and I know it was before me. So, I think through the years, this is a very good opportunity and an option compared to previous options that we've looked at. So, again, it's just a choice, and I think that's what we're trying to do as a, as a council and as a city. So, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Tompkins. Alderman Dickman?
Thank you, Your Honor. To me, I think this has primarily come forward as an access issue, that high-speed Internet access has, is becoming even increasingly more an economic necessity. And so, at least when we did the, when we tried to do the municipal build-out just over two years ago, that that was something where we were considering taking that risk, because we knew that it was important to make sure that even our citizens that lived in areas with potentially low take rates had the opportunity to access high-quality, high-speed Internet. And so, this, while it may not be the most perfect solution that could ever exist, time is kind of of the essence here. It's been of the essence for quite some time, but that being able to build this access in a way that is of a lower liability to the city, I think is vital. So, I guess that's, that's all I've got on that one. So, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Dickman. Anybody else from the council have any comments? If not, will the clerk call the roll for this resolution?
Condon.
Yes.
Dickman.
Yes.
Mattson.
Yes.
Grip.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Kuhl.
Yes.
Tompkins.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Ambrose.
Yes.
Nine yeses, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. The resolution is adopted. Our next item, item number nine, is a motion approving construction letter agreement between the City of Davenport and Metro Fiber Net for the construction of a community-wide fiber network offering cable, phone, and Internet services. Is there anybody from the public want to discuss this item? Speak on this item?
Good evening, Mayor Klipch and Davenport City Council. I just wanted to say a couple brief comments. I work with MediaCom Communications here in the Quad Cities. To clarify a couple things, service with MediaCom is available all over the city, so we have never in any point-in-time cherry-pick neighborhoods. Your residents, whether it be a low-income neighborhood, or your highest-income neighborhoods in Davenport, have access to gigabit speeds on our network. So, I know there's been some confusion about that. Fiber and gigabit are not always synonymous. So, our network does have many miles of fiber, but it's not a fiber-to-the-home network, but you can get gigabit service, and that doesn't matter what neighborhood you're in. In addition to that, as far as accessibility, we have a program called Connect to Compete, which is for any student on free or reduced lunch in your school districts. It's only $9.95 a month for a 10-megabit service. So, I'm not sure if MetroNet or other providers have something like that, but that is available to your residents and citizens all across Davenport if they qualify for that program. So, just want to make sure that you do understand there is access and high-speed access all across Davenport. Iowa was ranked, actually, the number-one state in America for ultra-fast speeds. So, Iowa and Davenport definitely are not behind the curve. We welcome the competition, but we just want to make sure that you understand the technologies and the difference in what we're able to do. It's going to continue to change. Fiber-to-the-home is a good product, but what we offer is a good product as well, and we'll continue to offer it to every resident, every business we can in Davenport, and we want to be good partners with you as well. Just wanted to clarify those points.
Thank you very much. And I think, again, as many of my colleagues said, thank you and others for your services you've been providing to the community. Anybody else? Any comments? I guess we're there at this point.
The consideration.
Thank you. A second? Thank you. It's moved and seconded. Any discussion from any Alderman on this item? Seeing none, will the clerk call the motion, the roll for the motion?
Dickman.
Yes.
Mattson.
Yes.
Grip.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Kuhl.
Yes.
Tompkins.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Ambrose.
Yes.
Condon.
Yes.
Nine yeses, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. And our last item on the discussion agenda, kind of going full circle, a motion directing staff to study traffic levels and speed on Lorton Avenue from 53rd to 46th Street to determine the impact to the residential neighborhood with proposed commercial development along 53rd Street west of Elmore. Is there anybody from the public who want to speak on this item?
Yes, Diane Sievers, 4920 Fairhaven Road. I just wanted to speak up in support of this idea. I think it's a good idea to examine the traffic and see what's going to happen as these new developments come into place, before we make any decisions about closing roads, creating one-ways. If we do make a one-way, am I sure it goes the right direction, since there seems to be some disagreement about which way we might see traffic cutting through? The other thing that I was going to say was, one of my neighbors brought up a good point about construction vehicles. Hopefully, if we start to see construction traffic passing through, I hope we can contact the city, and maybe we get some signage saying, please don't send construction vehicles up and down Lorton. I do believe that the speed device, speed-measuring device that's broken right now, I think it did measure speeds in both directions. I looked in my rearview mirror once when I was going the other direction, and I did think I saw the numbers came up, come up before it got broken. So, it may work in both directions and just only display in one. So, hopefully, we can get that clarified with Public Works. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else from the public want to talk on this item? Moved and seconded. Any discussion from any Alderman? Alderman Ambrose?
Thank you, Your Honor. You know, when there's a project that goes on that impacts the traffic on one of our main streets, you know, the drivers have a tendency to try to find the shortest route here. I think Alderman Mattson and I went through that for a couple of years when they were doing Kimberly Road and Division Street, and saw what the impact was to the neighborhoods there. But once the projects are completed, and the road construction is complete, although it might take a while out of 53rd, you know, it really, the impact to the neighborhood is almost nil after that. So, sure, there's a time to sacrifice, but at the same time, you know, this council has made very aware of the concerns of the neighbors, and I think where Kansas City, we'll get those addressed. Might take a little bit of time, but you got a great Alderman who's going to work really hard to listen to them. If you have an issue, you can always call your Alderman, or call the mayor, and, you know, we'll get staff out there, and we'll address those issues as quickly as possible. So, you know, don't wait to contact the city. And you can always come down to the city council, you know, we'll be missing you after a while. Thanks.
Thank you. Alderman Ambrose. Alderman McGinnis?
Thank you, Your Honor. Yes, to the point about construction traffic, I mean, those are extremely narrow roads, and I, I mean, it was brought up by someone else tonight. I would really like to see us look at being able to move very quickly if we find that this is what's happening, as whether it's construction on 53rd, or whether it's the demolition of the houses, and the construction that goes on in this project. How quickly could that happen? And is there anything, I'm looking at Nicole probably, is there anything restricting us doing that at a timely fashion? How does, how would that work in a temporary basis?
A weight restriction would be by ordinance. We could put up some signs requesting that construction vehicles not use that road relatively quickly, as soon as we could fabricate them. But an actual enforceable weight restriction would require an ordinance.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Kuhl?
And Nicole, before you sit down. I caught you just in time. I know that you've been responsible for purchasing those signs, those readouts. Do, does that one read in both directions?
I'll double-check with Gary. He is getting readouts from it already, but he did indicate it was the one direction. So, he is getting counts, he is getting things off of it, but I didn't ask him specifically if it was reading both. We are out of them right now, so if we do want to put a second one up, it'll be a little bit of time before we can get it ordered.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
As I mentioned last week, I would like to make this time definite, so I would offer an amendment to this motion to add a sentence on at the end stating that staff will provide a recommendation on any traffic modifications proposed to council in one year.
Motion and a second. I do want, win a roll call on that, or a voice vote?
It's an amendment. It's a voice vote.
Voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Thank you. So, that's now been, we've approved the amendment. The whole thing's in place. We've had discussion. Anybody else? First, Alderman Ambrose?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just for another opportunity, you know, we do have traffic cameras for enforcement, and there's such a wide range of use of these cameras. I would ask our Public Works staff to look into traffic enforcement cameras, so we can really monitor what's going on out there, when people are disobeying the rules. Whichever way we go, you know, they're going to be held accountable for it. And we can maybe move those around town as these projects happen. Thanks.
Thank you, Alderman Ambrose. I don't see anybody else at this point. Will the clerk call the roll for the motion, the amended motion?
Mattson.
Yes.
Grip.
Yes.
McGinnis. Nine yeses, Your Honor.
We're going to move on to the approval of all the items on the consent agenda. It's been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Gripp?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Clul?
Yes.
Tompkins?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Mattson?
Yes.
Nine yeses, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. We have another, there's other ordinance resolutions motion. We have a motion for suspending of the rules to add a vote on, add and vote on a following item. Is there a motion for suspension? It's been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Clul?
Yes.
Tompkins?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Mattson?
Yes.
Gripp?
Yes.
Nine yeses, Your Honor.
Now, we have a motion, and that motion is approving a liquor license application for Wise Guys Pizza and more, Joe Robbie Investments LLC at 2408 East 53rd Street. It's a new license owner, licensed-type beer and wine. Is there any public with comments on that item? It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion from any aldermen? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Clul?
Yes.
Tompkins?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Mattson?
Yes.
Gripp?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nine yeses, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. Again, I, we're going to move into our public with business portion. And again, I want to thank all my colleagues and most of all the people here for the really good dialogue tonight and respectful behaviors we've all encountered. This is a listening session, so this is one where the council does not respond. We listen, take information on the public with business, and there may be staff that we would refer you to. But if there's any public with business, please come now. Damon Ward, please, or address. Thank you.
Andrew Kiefer, fourth ward. Another week, another meeting, another protest out front protesting your changes to the Civil Rights Commission. We're just looking for a council member to have the courage to ask for a suspension of the rules, call a vote, and end this nonsense. It's ridiculous. It's all only upsetting the community. It's another week, and it's like, I tell you right now, I've talked to more people about how this is ridiculous than how it's not. You know, you're wanting conversations, have conversations after you kill this, not, not continue this whole holding it over our heads, tabling it. We've got, what, another two weeks yet? You know, you guys won't be here next week, but we will out front. And we're just growing. More and more people are joining us, you know, coming here, as opposed to just talking about it on Facebook or in their households or whenever we meet up at different places and see one another. They're starting to come here. This is making the council look bad. So just end it. Have the courage, call a vote, and end this now. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public with business? Yes, ma'am?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm here on a good note. I'm here to announce that there is a back-to-school block party that's being hosted on Saturday, Harrington Park, August 25th, from 12:00 to noon. What we wanted to do here, the Quad City Minority Expo, and myself and James Wilmington, was to bring some good news to the neighborhood, good news to the community that we are here to support and to help our children go back to school on a good note. I know they already started, got a few hours in, but we want their parents, the families, guardians, bring the children out, let them enjoy a day of, of good, a day of good with music, with free food. The River Bandits have been so kind. They have offered 200 tickets to make sure those families get to go to the game on Sunday afternoon free. It's the, not quite, they've got one more game, so Sunday and then Monday with Peoria. We have two aldermen who are sitting on the council who are, who are helping support with the city of Davenport, and that's Mary McGinnis, that is happening in her ward, and her backup, fourth ward alderman, Raymond Ambrose, who also stepped up to the plate. And I'm sure the mayor has heard about it and is looking at it as, as a goodwill measure to our community. So I'm going to hand the flyers out to Jackie, to all of you. Please stop by, say hello. You know, we had a very rough start with the summer with the gun violence, and so we wanted to end the summer with a back-to-school block party. And I'm pretty sure the kids are going to have a good time, and the families. It's for everyone, for the community. Please come by. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you please repeat the times at every, so we all make sure we hear that again? I know we'll get a flyer, but
Right.
so everybody else can hear.
It's Saturday, August 5th, from noon to 5:00, Harrington Park.
August 25th?
August. What did I say?
August.
August.
August 25th. It's Saturday.
Yeah, I've been working 10 hours, so you guys are getting leftovers right now. August 25th, noon to 5:00, Harrington Park.
Thank you.
And it's our first annual back-to-school block party. Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing no one. There are some reports of, other reports, a civil service list. Will an alter move the list at this point? It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, same sign. Thank you very much. They are moved. And again, a motion to adjourn. Moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, same sign. Adjourned.